My executive order N 2920 issued on March 18, 2020. NMUSD board meetings will be closed to the public. Spanish interpretation is available via the Zoom link. Good afternoon, everyone. Roll call, please.
Trustee Yelsey.
Here.
Trustee Barto.
Here.
Trustee Matoye.
Still here.
Trustee Anderson.
Here.
Trustee Crane. Trustee Orsoilu. Trustee Wigan.
Here.
Mr. Lee Sung.
Here.
Community input on closed session agenda items only. There were no comment cards received for closed session. We will now move into closed session. The items are, and I am pulling one item. Item 4F, conference with real property negotiator. The items we have there were 4A, student discipline, two cases. 4B, public employee discipline dismissal, release employment. 4C, public employee discipline dismissal, release employment. Number 202106HR. 4D, public employee discipline dismissal, release employment. Number 202107HR. 4E, conference with labor negotiator. 4G, threat to public services or facilities. 4H, public employee evaluation superintendent. We will return to open session at 6:00 PM with readouts. Thank you. All board members, please log off and log into closed session. Good evening, everyone. In compliance with Governor Newsom's executive order N 2920, in response to the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the district will conduct the Board of Education's meeting as a teleconference. Given the health risk associated with COVID-19, the Newport Mesa School District has decided not to open the boardroom to the public, calling the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. And I do have two readouts from closed session. In closed session, the Board of Education took action to approve the settlement agreement for number 202106HR. The roll call vote was seven yes, zero no's. And in closed session, the board took action to approve the settlement agreement of number 202107HR. The roll call vote was seven yes, zero no's. Okay, we will have an opening ceremonies with a moment of reflection and pledge to the flag led by trustee Orsoilu. Please rise. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Adoption of the agenda. And one little correction I'd like to add in this before we move. I'd like to move item 17D, which is approve the new student board members, before item 12. They are with us in person and it may be a while for them to be there.
And Madam President, before we adopt the agenda, can I move to move item 16A13 to discussion action, to the end of discussion action? I had a few questions on that one.
Which was it again?
16A13.
16A13.
Within our construction law.
Okay. So do I have a motion?
I move to move 17. Sorry, 17D to before 12 and 16A13 to the end of discussion action.
Second.
Moved by trustee Barto, seconded by trustee Anderson. Roll call vote. Yes. Yeah.
President Yelsey, I'm sorry. 16A17 is another item that staff would recommend pulling from the agenda. 16A17.
Completely.
16A17.
Move it completely.
No, to pull from the agenda.
Remove it, okay.
So I will amend my motion to move item 17D to before item 12, to move 16A13 to the end of discussion action and to remove 16A17 from the agenda.
And, okay. Okay, now that we've got that all settled for the agenda. Roll call vote.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Orsoilu.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Okay. Adoption of the amendments from 6:15:21. And I know trustee Crane has a comment.
Yes, I have a quick addendum to the minutes. Under Board Member Reports, if we could please add reports on, with report on Newport Mesa Schools Foundation. Thank you.
That was left. Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Matoye.
Moved by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Matoye.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Orsoilu.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Thank you. Introduction of staff.
All right. I'll introduce the introducer. How's that? So we're always excited to see new leaders join us here in Newport Mesa and zooming in from somewhere in a very beautiful spot. He's actually on vacation today, but he is tuning in to our board meeting as Mr. Drake to do the honors of introducing our two new leaders. Mr. Drake, good to see you.
It's good to see you too, Mr. Lee Sung. Can you all hear me? I just want to make sure you can all hear me. Are you hearing me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. So President Yelsey, Superintendent Lee Sung, trustees, executive cabinet, guests, I am beyond excited and actually honored to introduce to you these next two members of our Ed Services team. The first person I'd like to introduce to you as Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning is Ms. Lori Hernandez. Ms. Hernandez has nearly 20 years of experience and joins us from Westminster School District, where she served as the Executive Director of Teaching and Learning. So she will be able to hit the ground running here in Newport Mesa. And prior to her time in Westminster, she was an elementary school principal for the Cypress School District. As Executive Director of Teaching and Learning in Westminster, Ms. Hernandez spearheaded many district-wide professional development sessions, curriculum and textbook adoptions, instruct programs, assessment, expanded district, you name it, under Teaching and Learning. And Ms. Hernandez was responsible for that in the Westminster School District, along with teaching the upper grades as well as providing TOSSA support in previous years of her career. We know that Ms. Lori Hernandez will be able to hit the ground running and really incorporate into our system and Ed Services in Newport Mesa. Because throughout the hiring process, calling upon references and so forth, Lori was described as an exemplary leader, communicator, problem solver, collaborator, and most important to me, a student-centered leader who builds capacity in others through building their knowledge. I'm excited to introduce to you our Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning, Ms. Lori Hernandez.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Lee Sung and guests. Thank you, John, for the kind words. I'm excited to join Newport Mesa Unified this coming Monday and I truly appreciate the warm welcome I've received so far from all the staff. I look forward to meeting everyone in person and supporting all the great programs in Newport Mesa. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. We are also extremely excited to have you join us on Monday. Got lots for you to do. Okay. The next person I would like to introduce to our Ed Services team, you know very well, and that is Dr. Mike Shaka. As you all know, Mike brings with him a wealth of experience, both at the site and district levels, and has earned a reputation, as we all know, throughout Newport Mesa Unified School District as a highly respected instructional leader. And what distinguishes Mike from other candidates is his deep understanding of comprehensive core curriculum programs, his passion to create, implement and support effective curricular and teaching systems. As you know, there isn't much that Dr. Shaka hasn't done in Newport Mesa to prepare him to be our Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning. Through his experience as a high school teacher, TOSSA Coordinator of CTE Programs, Assistant Principal at Newport Harbor High and Estancia High, as well as an intermediate and most recently as the founding principal of our TK 12, 12th grade cloud campus, Dr. Shaka has always displayed exceptional leadership. At the foundation of Dr. Shaka's success is his ability to present a clear vision for all stakeholders and then provide the plan, support and professional development to bring that vision to reality. We are extremely excited to incorporate Dr. Mike Shaka's leadership on the Ed Services team as the Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning and cannot wait for Mike to join our team.
Oh, Dr. Shaka really well. And we will definitely have more introductions later on in the summer and we will definitely invite him back. We know that he was on vacation today and chances are he's probably in some remote location without an internet connection right at this moment. So anyways, but we do congratulate Mike Shaka and we're very excited to see him in this new role here in our district.
And, and thank you. Thank you, Mr. Drake, for tuning in from your vacation to introduce Lori to us. We are so pleased to have both Lori and Mike Shaka join the team in this capacity. So moving forward. Next, we'll go on to recognition of CSEA Chapter 18 Scholarship Recipients. And this is always great every year to see these, this wonderful opportunity that CSEA has for their members' families. So I'd like to introduce Pam Saunders, who will present these to the recipients.
Thank you, President Yelsey. I'm not sure who is here tonight from our scholarship, but as I go along, maybe they'll, maybe they'll zoom in. It was a pleasure. I would like to present this year's CSEA Chapter 18 Scholarship Recipients. On behalf of the Scholarship Committee, Chris Ramirez, Marcy Shans Brown, Rochelle Maitlighter, Anita Santora and myself. The following are the honorees and their parent attending tonight by Zoom and a certificate from the school board will be sent to them in the mail. Our first recipient is Winter Samara and her mom is Summer Samara from Pomona Elementary. And I don't know if they are here or not. Oh, hi, Summer. So anything you'd like to say tonight?
Just that we're really thankful for this gift of scholarship and we're really excited for Winter to start her college journey.
Thank you very much. So anyway, you'll be getting a certificate from the school board and they're, as you can see, they're very excited to do this every year. Thank you very much for applying and we're very proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next recipient is Ethan Dos Filmore and his mom is Ruth Dos Filmore from Costa Mesa High School. I don't know if they're here or not. Okay, Rosie says not present. Well, Ethan graduated, is graduating from, graduated from Costa Mesa High School in 2020 and he is going to be, he is attending Cal State University Long Beach and he'll be graduating in 2024. And we're very proud of him. Our next recipient is Matthew, and I always get the last name right, Law Penny X and it's Amy Ching's son in Fiscal Services and I don't know if they're here tonight. Well, Amy's son graduated from Edison High School in 2018 and he is attending Cal State University Long Beach right now. So we're very proud of him. Thank you very much. The next recipients are Samantha Gray and Joshua Gray and their mom is Lana Gray in Fiscal Services. And Lana sent a message because they couldn't be here tonight. On behalf of Samantha and Joshua Gray, they would like to thank CSEA and the Newport Mesa School Board. It will give them opportunities to invest in their future for Samantha. It will help pay for Concordia nursing tuition and Joshua's Cal State Long Beach tuition where he is studying MIS. Thank you for believing in them. Our next recipient, and we're very proud of both of them. Thank you very much. Our next recipient is Daniel Dickey. Her mom is Pamela Dickey at Costa Mesa High School. Daniel Dickey also graduated from Costa Mesa High School. No, she didn't. She graduated from early college high school. I think she might have been one of our board members at one time. But anyway, she graduated from Cal State Fullerton this year and she's going on to get her masters. And she also is also doing teaching in the district right now as a sub. Our next, thank you very much and we're very proud of them, her also. Our next recipient is Troy Huber and his mom is Shannon Huber and she's at Estancia High School. I don't know if they're or not. Well, anyway, Troy Huber graduated from Estancia High School in 2020 and he is at Harden Simons University and he will graduate in 2024. And we are very proud of him also. Thank you very much, Newport Mesa School Board, for this opportunity and recognition of CSEA scholarships. Again, thank you from CSEA.
Thank you, Pam. And what a great opportunity again. Thank you so much and thank you, Chapter, for doing this on an annual basis.
Yeah.
And while you're here, would you like to give your report now?
Sure. I'll do that. Thank you. Good evening, President Yelsey, Board, Superintendent Lee Sung, Cabinet and guests. Thank you for this opportunity from CSEA. First and foremost, we'd like to thank all of our classified employees throughout the district for all their hard work and dedication during the pandemic. Our positive impact is not yet done. CSEA has been an integral part in getting us where we are today and we continue to help to lead the way to educational normacy. As we start to open with less strict guidelines and we continue to follow the rules as outlined by Newport Mesa USD and all agencies taken into account, CSEA wants to ensure that classified members' needs and concerns are still addressed, especially with the changes regarding masks, social distancing and vaccinations as per Newport Mesa USD guidelines and following all the rules from all agencies. We are looking forward to positive changes for classified staff in the weeks ahead. We'd like to remind everyone to please stay safe during the upcoming July 4th holiday weekend. And again, thank you so much for letting us present our scholarships tonight and thank you for this opportunity from CSEA.
Thank you very much. Is President Fairbanks here?
Yes, I am here.
There she is.
Here I am. Good evening, dear trustees and honored guests. I would first like to acknowledge all of my colleagues who are working during the summer to combat learning loss. During such a long and ever-changing school year, the teachers and staff that are dedicating their summers to our students, they are dedicated to enhancing their learning and providing a sense of normal that will prepare them for the fall. Thank you to everyone who is working during our summer school. There is much hope and encouragement as we have been working with the district to get back to normal. Not only are teachers excited to refuel in order to give back to their students in the fall, they appreciate all of the surveys, any type of input in order to enhance our goals for our district. We are excited to work with the district and making sure that whatever the current safety measures are, that we can include that into the fall and actually have a sense of peace and normal that will help and excite student learning. Thank you all, the staff that have worked so hard this year. I wish for a restful and peaceful summer for those who are working summer school and hope that everyone has a chance to refuel and energize before fall. And thank you for, thank you for all classified and certificated administration for just giving your all this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have quite a few reports tonight. So we'll first move on to 12A, report on the district English.
We were going to do 17, sorry, 17D.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's A1.
Oh, my gosh, thank you. Okay, we're going to 16D1, introduction of student board members. Trustee Barto, would you like to take?
So it's, sorry, it's a 17D. And I'd love to introduce student board members. We're, we have one on Zoom as well from Estancia High School, Dane Dodge. And we have two in person. We have Costa Mesa High School, Sophia Catania Orozco and from early college high school, Nicole McMillan.
Can I come up socially?
Yeah, I was going to say, if you would like to come up, Sophia and then Nicole for a couple of minutes and just say hi and anything you like. We'll do one at a time just for a distance. Thank you.
To the podium.
To the podium, yeah. All right, that could be more clear.
Hello, I'm Sophia Catania. I'm an incoming senior at Costa Mesa High School and I'm really excited to be here.
All right, thank you. We're excited to have you.
Hello, I am Nicole McMillan from early college high school and I am an incoming junior. And yeah, thank you. I'm really excited for this opportunity and I'm glad to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we able to pull up Dane on Zoom? Well, while we're waiting. From Back Bay Montevista High School, our student board member is Gibson Showbeck from Cronin Omar High School, Katie Barnes. Newport Harbor High School, Kate Cherry. So we look forward to meeting them in person in August at our August board meeting.
You guys hear me? Hi, Ron, I'm Dane. I go to Estancia High School. I'm on ASB and I play water polo. And really thanks for this opportunity. Thank you.
So welcome and thank you. We're so excited to have you for the 2021, 2022 academic year. We're really, really looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. So trustee Barto.
Do you want me to make a motion to approve the?
Sure.
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the six student board members from Back Bay Montevista, Cronin Omar High School, Costa Mesa High School, early college high school, Estancia High School and Newport Harbor High School.
I'd love to second.
Pardon?
I will second that. Did you have it first, Mrs. Crane?
No, you can have it.
Pull, pull it down a little. Pull your mic down, then you don't.
Well, only one, we only need one second.
Okay. Well, we have two seconds.
Okay, moved by trustee Barto, seconded by trustee Crane. Roll call vote.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Orsoilu.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
And thank you all. They will officially join our board meeting in August. So that's where they will begin. And we wish you all a very happy, joyful summer. Take a break. Thank you for coming tonight, too. Okay, now we'll move on to reports. 12A, report on the District English Learner Advisory Committee, DILAC. And we will have Laura Del Pasch in person.
Good evening, President Yelsey, trustees, superintendent Lee Sung, cabinet and staff. It is so great to see you in person. Trustee Orsoilu, trustee Wigan and trustee Crane. I think it's the first time we've met in person. So I feel like I know you, but first time I'm seeing you live. I have the great pleasure of coordinating the District English Learner Advisory Committee, or DILAC. The group of parents is comprised of representatives from our 26 English Learner Advisory Committees across the district. Our DILAC parents are a group of extremely dedicated and responsive parents who not only attend meetings but engage and advocate for their children. You've all received the full DILAC report. We are not going to read it to you. In our presentation tonight, we would like to provide a few highlights. I'll be doing a few introductory comments and then the important part of our presentation, we'll be hearing from two of our amazing parents. The role of DILAC is to advise the Newport Mesa Unified School District on programs and services for English learners. While hosting DILAC and covering mandated topics is a state requirement, we strive to meet the needs of parents and engage them in a meaningful way. Therefore, parent-generated topics of interest are an integral focus in our meetings. Also, numerous sessions occur throughout the year to elicit input from parents on programs and services for English learners, including the LCAP, the Consolidated Application, and this past year on the Learning Continuity Plan. Through the challenges of the past year, our DILAC has stayed very strong, meeting via Zoom and adapting well to input sessions utilizing breakout rooms and other methods of engagement. We've had to be very creative and we've learned a lot on ways to engage parents virtually. DILAC input was even more critical in the last year to help staff in our efforts to be responsive to the needs of parents, families and students. So the 2020, 2021 DILAC is to be commended for their amazing dedication and efforts. A special thank you to our school community facilitators who play a vital role in the connection of families through ELAC and DILAC. Board, I want to thank you for your support and your attendance at many of our meetings throughout the year. Thank you for hosting our DILAC Chair, Carla Hernandez, twice this year for DILAC updates. So in that same fashion, I would like to introduce Mrs. Hernandez, who will be providing some summarizing thoughts for DILAC. She'll be providing them in Spanish and then Jacqueline Gaetan will be doing consecutive interpretation in English.
Thank you. While she's coming up, student board members, if you would like to leave, you're more than welcome. If you'd like to stay, that's great, too. Either way.
Buenas noches. Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Buenas noches, President Yelsey, miembros de la junta directiva y superintendente. Soy Carla Hernandez, presidenta de DILAC y madre de una estudiante en la escuela Victoria. Estoy aquí para presentarles el reporte de DILAC del año 2020 y 2021. Durante las juntas de DILAC considero que estos fueron los puntos más importantes. La información compartida durante las juntas de DILAC nos ayudaron a estar más conscientes, a ser más conscientes de las medidas de salud y seguridad durante la pandemia del COVID-19. La participación de las conferencias de CAVE, Asociación de California para la educación bilingüe, la ayuda tecnológica y brindada por el distrito como las distribuciones de Chromebooks y hotspots, la información sobre recursos de salud mental y distribuciones de comida durante la pandemia en las áreas de Costa Mesa y Newport Beach. Estas son, estas son mis recomendaciones. Se recomienda continuar usando, usando mensaje de texto para comunicarse con los padres de DILAC. Se recomienda continuar dando oportunidades a los padres de DILAC para participar en las conferencias de CAVE. Las juntas de DILAC nos ayudan a aprender cómo ser mejores padres. En caso, en mi, en mi, perdón. En mi caso, he aprendido bastante porque no solo es llevar a los niños a la escuela, sino también orientarlos cómo tomarles, cómo tomar buenas decisiones. Respecto a la recomendación sobre los servicios de nutrición, me alegra que nuestra voz sea escuchada y que se compartan con los líderes del distrito a través de el PAC. Muchas gracias.
Good evening, President Yelsey, members of the board and superintendent. I am Carla Hernandez, DILAC president and mother of a student at Victoria School. I am here to present the DILAC report for the 2021 school year. During the DILAC meetings, I considered. During the D-LAC meetings, I consider this to be the most important items. Information shared during D-LAC meetings helped us become aware of health and safety measures during the COVID-19 pandemic. Participation in the CAVE, California Association for Bilingual Education seminar. Technological support provided by the district such as the distribution of Chromebooks and Hotspots. Information shared on mental health resources and further distribution during the pandemic in the Costa Mesa and Newport Beach areas. These are my recommendations. It is recommended to continue using text messages to communicate with D-LAC parents. It is recommended that the district continue to provide opportunities for D-LAC parents to participate in CAVE seminars. D-LAC meetings help us learn how to be better parents. In my case, I have learned a lot because it's not only taking the children to school, but it's also guiding them in how to make good decisions. Regarding nutrition service recommendations, I am pleased that our voice is heard and shared with the district leaders through the LCAP. Thank you.
One thing I want to point out that Mrs. Hernandez mentioned was CAVE. So CAVE is the California Association for Bilingual Education. And this year, with parent engagement funds, we were able to send, offer all of our D-LAC representatives to go to the CAVE conference, which, it being held virtual, was an advantage. And so quite a few of our parents were able to attend. And thanks to Ms. Gaetan, they joined a little group. She had a little text group, and they went session to session together virtually. And parents really, really enjoyed that. So I think both of our parents tonight mentioned that, and it is in our report as well. It's the first time we've done that, and we definitely want to continue that. So next, I would like to thank, or thank you to Mrs. Hernandez. But I, next, I'd like to introduce Carolina Martinez. She is also a D-LAC parent, and she's going to share her D-LAC story from the past year.
Buenas noches, President Yelsey, miembros de la junta directiva y superintendente. Soy Carolina Martinez, representante de D-LAC y madre de familia. Es un placer estar aquí con todos ustedes. Hoy les vengo a compartir un poco de todo el apoyo, la ayuda que D-LAC me ha brindado a mí y a mis hijos. Soy madre de dos hermosos niños. Mi hijo que pertenece a la escuela secundaria Costa Mesa y mi hija que pertenece a la escuela primaria Sonora. Quiero agradecer a todo el equipo de D-LAC por darme esta oportunidad de compartir con todos ustedes los logros y las metas que he logrado en el transcurso que he participado en las reuniones de D-LAC. Yo fui motivada para participar en reuniones y talleres por la señora Marcy Brown, a quien agradezco mucho por todo su apoyo, ya que yo también admiro a todos los que forman parte de D-LAC. Mi mayor propósito y meta fue aprender y practicar toda clase de ayuda, información que D-LAC me ha brindado para ayudar a mis hijos. Yo quería darle motivación a mis hijos para que sobrellevaran la pandemia y sobresalieran en sus estudios. Mi hijo, el mayor, iba mal en sus calificaciones y créditos, y le faltaba poco para llegar al grado 12. Yo empecé a notar a mi hijo muy desganado y triste. Por suerte, D-LAC ofrece talleres de padres de cómo sobrellevar la crisis de los hijos, y yo cada vez me interesaba más y motivaba más a participar en las reuniones y talleres. Mi hijo empezó a notar que yo participaba cada vez más en mis reuniones de D-LAC en Zoom, y él cambió de actitud. Y el cambio de mi actitud en la importancia, la motivación y la ayuda que les brindaba en cada uno de sus proyectos y tareas. Aunque no hablo mucho el inglés, trato de apoyarlo lo más que puedo. Mi hijo empezó a dar un cambio increíble. Empezó a mejorar en todo, sus calificaciones, en todas sus calificaciones. Lo empecé a ver todos los días enfocado en sus tareas, cumpliendo con sus proyectos, cumpliendo con sus clases sin necesidad de estarlo presionando. Y lo mejor es que logró completar sus créditos, y eso me hizo sentir muy feliz y orgullosa de mi hijo y de haber logrado mi propósito, mi meta gracias al apoyo en D-LAC y gracias a toda la ayuda que nos brindan. También una de las ventajas que tenemos los padres que no hablamos inglés es de tener intérprete en todo momento. En las reuniones podemos expresar nuestras preocupaciones y dudas que cada uno de nosotros tenemos como padres. Nuestras opciones siempre son, opiniones siempre son escuchadas y tomadas en cuenta. D-LAC me ha enseñado a expresarme mejor como persona y como madre. También me ayudó a sobrellevar el problema que tenía con mi niña menor que andaba todo el tiempo muy estresada e inquieta, más en estos tiempos de pandemia, y no quería cumplir con tareas ni entrar a sus clases en línea. Ella empezó a notar y a estar presente en mis reuniones de Zoom, y al paso del tiempo empezó a mejorar y a motivarse más en sus clases y responsabilidades. Ella me ha dicho que se siente feliz al saber que su mamá forma parte de un equipo de su escuela. También tuve la dicha de participar en el seminario de CAVE. Fue una experiencia muy bonita, con mucha información de todo tipo de ayuda y orientación. Lo disfruté y aproveché al máximo. Muchas gracias a todo el equipo de D-LAC que me han ayudado mucho a mí y a mis hijos, más en estos tiempos de pandemia, que todo ha sido más difícil para todos. Sus reuniones y talleres han sido de mucha ayuda. Gracias.
Good evening, President Yelsey, members of the board and superintendent. I am Carolina Martinez, D-LAC representative and parent. It is a pleasure to be here with you all today. I come to share a small portion of the large amount of support I received, the help that D-LAC has given me and my children. I am a mother of two beautiful children. My son attends Costa Mesa High School, and my daughter attends Sonora Elementary School. I want to thank you. I want to thank the entire D-LAC team for giving me this opportunity to share with all of you the accomplishments and goals that I have achieved in the course of participating in D-LAC meetings. I was motivated to participate by Mrs. Marcy Brown, whom I thank very much for all her support, since I also admire everyone who is part of D-LAC. My main purpose and goal was to learn and practice all types, types of assistance and information that D-LAC has given me to help my children. I want to motivate my children to cope with the pandemic and excel in their studies. My oldest son was doing poorly in his grades and credits, and he was just short for reaching the 12th grade. I began to notice my son's behavior was very restless and sad. Luckily, D-LAC offered parents workshops on how to cope with the children in crisis, and I became more and more interested and motivated to participate. My son began to notice that I participated more and more in my D-LAC Zoom, and the change in my attitude towards their education motivated me to engage in each of their projects and tasks. Although I don't speak much, much English, I support them as much as I could. My son began to make an incredible change. He began to improve in all his grades. I began to see him every day focusing his task, fulfilling his projects, attending classes without having to pressure him. And the best thing of all was that he was able to complete his credits, and that made me feel very happy and proud of my son and having achieved my purpose. I achieved my goal thanks to the support at D-LAC and thanks to the help they gave us. One of the advantage that parents who do not speak English have is the access to interpreters at all times. In the meetings, we can express our concerns and doubts that each of us have as parents. Our opinions are always heard and taken into account. D-LAC has taught me to express myself better as a person and as a mother. It has also helped me to cope with the problem I had with my youngest child, who was very stressed and restless all the time, especially during these times of COVID pandemic. She didn't want to fulfill tasks or participate in her online classes. She also began to notice and began to see through my D-LAC Zoom meetings. As time went on, she began to improve and motivate herself more in her classes and responsibilities. She told me that she was happy to know that her mother is part of a team at her school. I also had the joy, the joy of participating in the CAVE seminar. It was a very nice experience with a lot of information and all the kinds of help and guidance. I truly enjoyed the seminar, and I met the most of the opportunity. Many thanks to the entire D-LAC team who have helped me and my children, especially in these times of uncertainty during the COVID pandemic, which has been more difficult for all of us. Their meetings and worship have been very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, I just have to first say, I think all of us have smiles under our mask with this report. And first of all, I want to thank, are you finished yet, or can I-
Almost. I just wanted to just comment that-
I didn't want to interrupt your report.
Sorry, that, it's hard with the consecutive interpretation, but you can tell that it was a little long, but we wanted to be sure and share this story. And this is why we come to work every day. And this is, it's been a hard year, as you can tell. And our D-LAC group has just really hung in there, and we, we hope we've provided them some support. I did just want to do a closing of just a couple of thank yous. There's a lot of people that make that possible. And so I want to thank our staff. That includes Jacqueline Gaetan, Zaira Diaz, our other district site support, school community facilitator, Claire Warner, Vanessa Galey, and of course, the fabulous, and he better use fabulous in his simultaneous right now, Javier Zamorano. And a reminder that he is interpreting in all of your meetings. I, when I'm at home, I turn on his Spanish, and I listen to him. So he interprets at our D-LAC meetings as well and helps our parents feel connected. So thank you, Javier. And of course, thank you to all of our dedicated parents, so.
And while you're still up here, just thank you, Laura, for everything you've done with D-LAC. I mean, it's really grown in participation and in terms of what they do. And Ms. Hernandez and, and Ms. Martinez, your reports were fabulous, and they were really heartfelt of what you went through this past year and also what you've learned. And I can imagine your children admire you quite a bit for what you've done in your roles with D-LAC. And I'm sure there's many other parents who also have prospered and learned through this process. And we're just excited for it to continue to move on in this direction because it was in a difficult year. It was a really remarkable program.
Thank you. Anything else?
Fabulous. Muchísimas gracias por todo, por los padres darle tiempo. Necesita para asistir, to attend? As my, mi español está poquito, pero es, los, los palabras que ustedes hablan con nosotros tengo mucho meaning.
What's the word I gotta learn?
Significado, sí. Y gracias por todo del año y por todo este noche.
What I just said was, thank you very much. The words that you said were very important to us as a board. And it, porque está, los, las palabras de los madres. Because it came from you, and it's so important to us, and I thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to 12B, report on LCFF, Local Performance Indicators for California State Dashboard. Ms. Galey. Here she comes.
Hi, everybody. I'm here for part two of the LCAP extravaganza. Let's see.
I missed the coordinated clothing.
It'll be better next year.
That's the part that I'm worried about, right? Not all the great stuff this year.
Yes. So I have a couple of components this evening to round out our Local Control and Accountability Plan package. And so this piece is a report on the local performance indicators. And as you may expect, it's been an unusual year, so it'll be a little bit of an unusual presentation, but I hope you'll bear with me. So as you may recall from our LCAP presentation, we have state priorities that we write to. There are eight state priorities for school districts, two additional priorities for county offices of education that also have to have programs for expelled youth and for foster youth. And these priorities are categorized in three areas: conditions of learning, student outcomes, and engagement. Now, the, the dashboard that was intended to be a complete reporting to the public about state indicators of success and local indicators of success was the California School Dashboard. It was intended to show status as well as change. And so that's the colors that you see there. Blue would be the, the best, and on down to red being the worst. So in 2019, excuse me, 2019 was the, the last normal dashboard, and that was revealed in November, December of 2019. And so it covers these areas of state indicators, which are the academics. And all of the state indicators have statewide available data. All districts have to report this. It's available through the California Department of Ed, and so it can be calculated for school districts. So you see all of these areas around academics, around absenteeism and suspension and graduation. Now, there's also local indicators, and that's where locally collected data comes into play and where annually districts were supposed to provide a report on how we were doing. And by measuring their progress and reporting on those results, then we had met the requirement. And then we would go in and fill in this dashboard and say that we've met the requirement because we did those two things, and would also include a little narrative. But then things changed. And so the 2020 dashboard, which has been revealed, has far less information. It no longer includes the local performance indicators. However, we have a written report that we're posting to the website so that we're still fulfilling that, that obligation. So you can't find it through the, the dashboard anymore, but you will find it on our district website. So the local performance indicators have some standards that were provided by the state that we needed to meet. And so that was provided for all local educational agencies or districts and county offices. As I said, we have to measure our progress. We have to report the results. And then we determine if we've met the requirements, not met, or not met for two or more years. So in this time, of course, I grade out. We don't have to report through the California School Dashboard. It's no longer functional for those purposes. So remember, we're measure, we report, and we met. So hang on. We're going to try and do this in 16 minutes or less. Okay. Okay. Priority one is about things that are reported through the school accountability report card. Every school has one. You can go to our website and find your own school, the school your children are going to go to next. And so one of the things that's reported in there is the extent to which we have appropriately assigned teachers, access to curriculum that's aligned to state standards, and then safe, clean, and functional school facilities. And so within our district, we have zero misassignments. We're very proud of that. We had seven vacant teacher positions at the point in time when the data is collected. We have zero students without access to their standards-aligned instructional materials because we've gone through many adoptions, and we have materials available for all. And our facilities not only meet the good repair standard, but they meet overall good or exemplary. So we've met the requirement for local indicators for basics or priority one. So we've met the requirement for local indicators for basics or priority one. See, we're moving along. Okay, priority two, implementation of state academic standards. The state provides a tool for us to rate ourselves and our progress in implementing our state standards. And so we've measured that on this tool and we're reporting it to you. But what we wanted to do was combine looking at 1920, our last normal time, looking at the last year, our abnormal time, and trying to figure out where we are, but knowing that we will build toward the future. So we had a robust LCAP survey and some pretty good participation in 2019-20. And so in that time, we asked quite a few questions of our staff about their access and the sufficiency of professional development. And as you recall, in 1920, we had a huge math adoption for secondary. We were on the heels of a math adoption for elementary, quite a bit of professional development around that. So you can see that math was at the top in terms of the teachers agreeing that they agreed or strongly agreed that they had sufficient professional development, kind of going down the line to a little bit less around next gen science standards. That's a challenge for us because they're so new and different. And then again, also for the English Language Arts, again, such a focus for us in those years. And especially in the pandemic, of course, we focused principally on English Language Arts and mathematics for our littlest kids. So well over 61% saying that it was sufficient professional learning in 2019. Then our structures and systems changed and so we want to acknowledge that now. And so this self-reflection tool is on a continuum, starting with one, an exploration and research phase, and five being full implementation and sustainability. And so one is not bad and five is not the best. It's just a temperature check of where a district thinks it is at that given moment. And so what we tried to achieve in this one is to show a little X on where the ratings were last go around in November of 2019. And then where we think we stand now relative to that phases of implementation, recognizing that our priority for professional learning over the last year was really about connecting to kids, having access online, and then trying to really meet the mental health and the social emotional needs of our kiddos. We had no pullouts. We had no subs for this work because we were limiting subs to health situations. And so really, we think we were not as robust as we were at full implementation pre-pandemic. We know we will get there again, but we do think that there were some challenges that we faced in the core academics. Additionally, we acknowledge that for next gen science standards, they're intricate and they're different. And we have not been able to yet really dig in with our elementary teachers on that front. Now, it'll come, but for right now, we felt like this is an accurate representation of where we are. Now, our instructional materials didn't change. We didn't lose any of them, but we didn't gain any of them either. So this is a reflection of exactly the same responses as we had pre-pandemic. I do want to note for English Language Development that we had the same adoption for our secondary students for quite a while. And we've purchased a refresh, you may remember that from I think two meetings ago. And so they will have those materials in their hands in the fall. And so we'll see that number slide up a little bit on the right. In terms of supporting staff and instruction, we were focused on other things and identifying areas where teachers could refine their instruction and their academics. We were, that's just not where we put a lot of our efforts than the last year. And so we acknowledge that we think we're more at an initial implementation. And then again, for next gen science and for history, social studies, we really haven't done a lot of work with our elementary teachers in that area. And so this is in recognition of that, but knowing again that we're just so excited for next year and especially our new directors being in place. So we really are looking forward to providing this update to you next year. As for our other academic standards, we felt we were pretty much in the same places before, except for PE. PE was a real struggle. And so we wanted to acknowledge that we felt like we were kind of back to an initial implementation phase because of the pandemic, but knowing that we'll get right back where we started next year. And then lastly, in terms of thinking about engaging our teachers and administrators and looking at learning needs, again, that wasn't necessarily a focus of the last year. And so we wanted to acknowledge that and know that we have a ways to go, but we're really excited again about adding in our new directors and that focus so that we can really hone in on the learning needs of our teachers and our struggling teachers in particular. So that was priority two. Now we're on to priority three. So parent engagement. Parent engagement has been called three things over the last five years. Parent involvement, parent engagement, and parent and family engagement. So we all know what it is. It's about not just involving, but really engaging our families. And the state focuses on two key aspects of that. And so that is seeking input from parents and decision making, and then also promoting parent participation in programs, particularly for our English learners, our foster youth, and our students with disabilities. So in our previous version of our LCAP, we had a goal called parent involvement. And we focused on a couple of aspects, decision making through our advisory groups, making sure that every family knew they could participate through our PTAs and PTOs, making sure we have access for our families via translation and interpretation, and then providing parent education through workshops linked to learning and social emotional growth. The state again provides some prompts, which are not necessarily always resonating with our realities. And so we felt like we were at an initial implementation on some of the seeking input areas because we've not necessarily had the opportunity to build capacity over the last year and a half, the way we might have redirected our focus if we had been in different times. Also, we really want to focus on, we provide amazing parent surveys and parent education opportunities. But if you look at number four, it talks about working together to plan, design, implement, and evaluate these activities. And so that is a next level activity that we're really looking forward to doing, that co-creation and really kind of moving along that continuum. We know we've provided great things, but we also want to do those four things. In terms of involvement of special populations, as part of our previous LCAP, we asked families, do you have a child who's an English learner? Do you have a child who has an IEP? And then we asked them, have you been invited to participate in our advisory committees? And so you can see that quite a few of them recognized, yes, they've been invited. And we encouraged participation at those committee meetings. That's a particular feature of making sure that we're inviting all of our families. And also noticing that quite a few parents, though they're gray, recognize they've been encouraged to attend at school events and in PTA, PTO. Eighty-nine percent of the respondents. And I have to say that with an asterisk because you can see that's definitely not 20,000 respondents. It's more like 2,000. So we had a ways to go then. I will also tell you now, in our 2020 survey, we only had 1,111 families respond. So we're really looking forward to a robust survey experience in the next year. And this is what you can see here. So quite a few fewer people responding to some different questions. We crafted them differently in response to thinking about distance learning and online learning. But again, we did a lot of work around making meetings accessible via Zoom, trying to make sure that translation and interpretation was available and worked on our strategies for communication. So again, in terms of building relationship, we've not invested recently in that building capacity aspect that we would like to see over the course of the next year. We know we have welcoming environments, but it's hard to be so welcoming on Zoom and without them being face to face. So again, I've been at some of our summer programs the last few days and it has been so great to see our families standing at the gates and they're chomping at the bit for us just to get back to normal. So I know we're going to get there. And then we're also looking at shoring up our understanding of all the assets that our families and children bring to our campuses and how we can elicit that from our families and help the teachers learn those pieces as well. And then lastly, we know that we're providing two-way communication. I sign off the budgets, all the schools know about their tools at their fingertips. So they have those tools at the ready. We have a great parent education series that Student Services has hosted and it's cosponsored by our Community Advisory Committee. So we really have brought that inclusive model to bear in terms of our parent education. We offered the PTA developed School Smarts Grupo Preservado. A number of our schools had already been working with Mr. Bravo and so we provided a series at the district level as well. And then we have site-based workshops, academic behavior and social emotional on every campus. Obviously, this last year was a little limited, but next year, we're really excited about some of the things they'll be able to do. So we know that in terms of building partnership, it's critical. But we also acknowledge that this was not the time that we were going to provide professional learning on how to do that for our teachers and our principals. We recognize that we're in an exploration and research phase, knowing that that will be a priority moving into the next year, but it certainly was not during the pandemic. So we know we have a lot of areas to grow, but we are so proud of the welcoming environments and the high quality experiences that we are providing for our families. And we're just really looking forward to being in a more face-to-face Level One experience in September. So second to last, we're looking at school climate. And I'm going to invite my partner from Student Services Coordinator, Sarah Coley. She's going to talk with us about the results of our most recent administration of the California Healthy Kids Survey.
Thank you, Vanessa, and thank you everyone for having me here this evening. So the priority number six is school climate. And so we do administer our California Healthy Kids Survey every two years. However, the last time that we did administer the survey was the 2018-19 school year. We were mid-administration during 2019-20 school year, but we had to halt the administration due to school closure. So we resumed the administration this year. And the survey is administered to grades five, seven, nine, and 11. So we can go to the next slide. Thank you. So for the indicators, we are looking at three critical areas. School connectedness, caring adults, and high expectations. So as you know, there's a number of different areas in the California Healthy Kids Survey, but for this purpose, we did focus on these three areas. So for school connectedness, the questions are very similar for fifth grade as well as for the seventh, ninth, and 11th graders. The language changes just a little bit, you know, to make sure that it's age appropriate. And the questions include things like, I feel close to people at this school. I'm happy to be at this school. I feel like I'm a part of this school. And the teachers here treat students fairly. So we can go to the next slide. And so for our fifth grade students, 77% of our students indicated that it was yes, most of the time, or yes, all of the time. Our seventh grade students is 67%, ninth grade 63%, and 11th grade 65% reported, an average reporting of agree or strongly agree. Now with this, we did put just this little asterisk because it is a little bit different. You know, again, as far as how fifth graders report and how our seventh, ninth, and 11th graders report, we are looking to do comparative data. But the way that the data was reported to us this year versus the last time that we administered the survey was a little bit different. And so we did just look at this year's administration. And you'll also notice that for our students that were jumping into our seventh grade as well into our ninth grade, that we did start seeing a dip, which is not unexpected as the students were entering into new schools. And they're entering, you know, during this time when we started with remote learning and then it was such a different year for them. And so we know that we have some work to do to help them feel more connected as we go into this next year. So for our next slide, so for caring adults. Again, the questions differ slightly. They're the same types of questions, but just to make sure that they're age appropriate. But really, this area is focusing on, is there a teacher or some other adult from my school who really cares about me? Who notices when I'm not there and who listens to me when I have something to say? And so area, we had 76% of our fifth grade students report yes, most of the time, or yes, all of the time. 65% of our seventh graders reported pretty much true or very much true. 57% of our ninth graders and then 60% of our 11th graders. And then for our last area, which is high expectations, this is really focusing on, you know, do teachers or some other adults at this school tell me that I do a good job? Or who always wants me to do my best or who believes that I will be successful here? And so then looking at our scores here for students, 89% of our ninth grade students said yes, most of the time, or yes, all of the time. 79% of our seventh grade students said pretty much true or very much true. 68% of our ninth graders and then 67% of our 11th graders also reported pretty much true or very much true. So you can see we're averaging, you know, in those high 67% for most of our students, I'm feeling like there are high expectations for them on our campuses. So I think for our next.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah.
Okay, the last one. Priority seven is course access. And we're supposed to look at the extent to which students have access to and are enrolled in a broad course of study. You may be wondering what a broad course of study is. Here it is, broad courses study. It's listed as grades one through six and seven through 12. Remember kindergarten is not required in the state of California, although everyone provides it. And so those are the areas that are outlined in that broad course of study. And that is our default program for all of our students. So how we assess ourself is really looking at the outcomes, our graduation rates, not only graduation, but students meeting those UCCSU requirements, looking at our career tech ed pathways, LCAP survey results, and then our VAPA opportunities. So again, our broad courses study is a default instructional program. Our students get music, PE, and science. We've worked really hard in our district to provide extra staff to help deliver that instruction, especially with the PE and the science specialists and the music specialists on top of what the classroom teachers provide. For our English learner students, we provide 30 minutes or more of designated English language development according to their proficiency levels as required in statute. And then the remainder of their instruction is with English-only peers and reclassified peers so that they have that ongoing access to that core curriculum. Students with an IEP, for the most part, are included in our classrooms with their typical peers. We have an inclusive practices approach. And so to the extent possible, we really work hard to include our kiddos in our classrooms. Students who have moderate to severe disabilities are still provided that broad courses study through unique learning systems. That's a complete standards-aligned curriculum and it's in an appropriate setting designated by their ELP. I'm sorry, IEP. So our outcomes, you can see, one of the things we want to clarify is we are using a five-year cohort outcome. If you go to the California Department of Ed website, you can also look up a four-year cohort outcome. So we've done that. And you can see that for all of our students, 91.2% graduated in the most recently available data. For English learners, it's 84.1%. Low income was 91.2 and students with disabilities 79.3. I want to point out to members of our public that English learners, when you're looking at this, this means that a student has gone all the way through graduation at high school and has not been able to reclassify. And reclassifying means that you have demonstrated language skills commensurate to your English-only peers. And so we want to acknowledge some of the real challenges that our students who are 11th and 12th grade as English learners trying to meet requirements for UC and CSU. So just making that known. And so you can see that the targets, of course, for the UCCSU, not targets, excuse me, the outcomes are significantly lower. In terms of CTE, we are so proud of our pathways. We have multiple schools offering business management and digital visual media arts, et cetera, et cetera. So we have 16 different pathways through our various schools and I believe we're adding another one next year. We had 173 CTE completers. We're aiming for more even in the following year. We had 209 secondary VAPA classes, so we offered a lot. And again, don't forget our default program for our elementary kiddos is to get music. So lastly, when we had some surveys in normal times, we asked kiddos, how much access do you have to college and career readiness and to a pathway that leads you to A to G completion? And so you see the kids are in green on the bottom. And so at least 50% or more have said they know that they can take college assessments. They knew they could take IB if they wanted. They had a four-year plan. They were able to take A through G. And just to make sure that they knew what A to G was, we asked them a different way. And so this was high schoolers. And so pretty much 87% on down knew that they had certain aspects of A to G that they needed to access. So we know that they knew, that we knew. All right. So in part of our report and the local indicators, we're supposed to identify some barriers to success. And really, one of the barriers that we'll be watching over the course of the next few years is kids who have multiple Fs. Typically, it's not just one, but two, three, four, five Fs. And so how do they matriculate, learn, and earn, right? Those credits while still learning and moving on. So that can be a challenge. Some other challenges were inconsistent access to during-the-day reading and math intervention. We may provide some, but it may not be enough to meet their needs. And so how can we continue to provide that? Also, there are some varied practices as in any organization and we can continue to look at how we're providing feedback and grading. And then also recognizing that students who are recently arrived face other significant challenges. In terms of thinking about how our LCAP was impacted, we continue to provide that broad courses study. We offer our A to G-aligned courses as our default. We have these pathways that we're so very proud of and we continue to grow. And then we also continue to provide tutorial support and enrichment for our kids to keep them engaged, but to provide help where needed. Also, we have to identify how the English learners are impacted in our plan relative to the local indicators. And so we continue to provide our multiple intensive designated ELD classes, especially at the secondary level. But really also, we're working on access in our core content. We don't want to pull our kiddos out. We want to make sure that they're staying in. And we want to continue exploring our scheduling options because we really want to see English Language Arts and English Language Development in tandem, mutually informing one. mutually informing one another. And of course, for our students with an IEP, we're going to continue to refine our inclusive practices through our learning center model. We know that it's so wonderful when we can include our kids with their typical peers. And so we're really looking to provide that and also consistent collaboration between gen ed and special ed, and making sure that we're connecting so that the kids are getting a robust and well-rounded education. It wasn't quite 16 minutes, but we did the best we could. So there's our standards again. We've covered basic conditions of learning, implementations of state standards, parent and family engagement, school climate, and access to a broad courses study. And then with that, I'll see if you have any questions.
You never cease to amaze us with your knowledge and depth of involvement in all these different areas. It's really well done.
Thank you.
Questions? Trustee Anderson?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
If we can get the PowerPoint, that would be really wonderful. I was looking at the attachment that you gave us, which is also helpful.
Could you move your mic?
Yes. I was looking at the report that we have online, but to have that would be great for follow-up. I was wondering for the English language students for the A to G requirements, it said 19.8%. What is that? Do you know that number? How many students?
No, but I can get that for you.
Okay, that would be really great, because I'm just wondering how high that is. And then I'm wondering too, what would you recommend for the building partnerships section? It seems like there is some room for improvement with families. Are there plans in place to improve that? What would you suggest in that section?
I would say that we don't have specific training in place yet. We're still designing what we want to do next year in concert with the new assistant supes and the new directors. And I think all together, we're going to work and really emphasize that it's a partnership between student services and ed services. And so we want to make sure that we're paying attention to academic behavior and social emotional when we're working on those things.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Anyway, Trustee Matway.
Practice what I preach. When you spoke of a five-year cohort versus a four-year cohort, would you explain what that means?
Sure. So one would hope that a kid starts off in ninth grade, ends up in 12th grade, and graduates. But the state also allows us to track kids who have graduated afterwards. So an example is sometimes we will provide a fifth-year option for kids. And so in that case, then we can count them towards our graduation rates.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions?
My question was around parent engagement, so thank you.
Okay.
And wonderful job.
Thank you.
Almost amazing.
Amazing.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we will have, receive a report on the district's risk management program, Jonathan Willby. And Jonathan, I know both Superintendent Lee Sung and I have built this up quite a bit.
Really have. You put a lot of pressure on me here. All right, President YLC, Trustees Superintendent Lee Sung, and Executive Cabinet. First of all, thank you for giving me the opportunity to report on the risk management program tonight. My plan for the presentation is really to give you an introduction to risk management by defining what it is, what it encompasses, and also what the benefits are to the district. And also talk about the strategic vision of the program going forward. And really talking about some high-level objectives that we're really trying to build into everything the program's about. But like you led in with, Superintendent Lee Sung gave a teaser, the COVID update last week, that I'd also talk about what got me into risk management. So I figure you've been waiting all weekend for this, so I better get to that at first. So I don't really know if I chose risk management, or if risk management chose me, or if it was just kind of a little bit of both. But 19 years old, I was a college student going to a small college in Washington State called Central Washington University. And during the summer, I had the opportunity to go to Alaska with one of my high school friends and stay with his dad. The plan was that we would work on the docks all summer. We would make some money because the money was really good, especially for a fairly poor college kid. And that was the plan for three months. So we did that, and it was a great summer. Going into the final three weeks of the summer before we came back home, one of us had the opportunity to go out on a fishing boat. And they had 48-hour halibut openers at the time, where basically you'd go out. And the only time that the fishermen could fish for halibut was during these 48 hours.
Wow.
They'd catch their limit for the entire season. And there's a lot of pressure to get as much as you can within that limit during that time period. So they only needed one person who hadn't been out on a boat before. My buddy was probably smarter than I was and said he didn't want to do it. So I went out on the boat. And it was great. I learned a lot. We basically got up until very close to the end of the 48 hours, and we were getting close to our limit. So the captain said, let's get one more line out, one more set of lines, and really try to get our limit before heading back in, even though he knew that there was a storm coming in. So we did that. We got our limit. We headed back. The weather was beautiful at the time. And then sometime on the trip back, the weather shifted. So a storm came in. There were 30- to 40-foot swells, 20- to 30-mile-an-hour winds. The boat started to take on water, and eventually the boat ended up sinking.
Oh, my.
So I spent six hours on a life raft, ended up being picked up by the Coast Guard. It was great. Got picked up by the Coast Guard. They made us breakfast. They put on Mrs. Doubtfire. They gave us a binder of movies, and we chose Mrs. Doubtfire, and we watched a movie on the way back. But ended up sinking on a boat, so I've got that story for you. But at the time, I was 19 years old. I was a business major going into my junior year. I really didn't know what I wanted to do with that. And kind of that life event made me really start thinking about what I was going to do. So I did another semester of business, and I really started to talk to people during that semester about other majors. And a couple of people I talked to mentioned this major called loss control management. Now it's called safety and health management. And I took a couple of classes, and I really liked it. It really connected with me after sinking on a boat and seeing a lot of things that went wrong as far as occupational health and safety and protecting employees. And it really connected with me, and I stayed in the major, and that got me into risk management. So it kind of expanded from there into other areas of risk management. But that was the kind of change in direction in my life.
Wow.
So there's that story. As far as the risk management program, starting out, if you research or take any risk management classes, you're going to see definitions of risk management that all look fairly similar. Risk management helps an organization identify, evaluate, analyze, monitor, and mitigate the risks that threaten the achievement of the organization's strategic objectives in a disciplined and systematic way. So a couple of things that really stand out to me here is disciplined and systematic way. Risk management doesn't just happen on its own. It's planned processes, planned events within the organization, and it's identifying risk and really managing those risks in a systematic way. The other day, I heard someone, one of my colleagues, that gave a different definition of risk management that's really stuck with me. And he said, risk management is keeping the bad stuff from the good stuff. And to me, that's really easy. I mean, the good stuff in a school district is our mission, our objectives, our vision, graduation rates, everything that Vanessa just went over with the LCAP. That's all the good stuff. The bad stuff is workers' compensation claims, lawsuits, environmental issues, inefficient use of limited resources, all those things that really take those resources out of the classroom. And there's a lot of them in school districts that we have to be aware of, that we have to manage, and that we really have to do a good job with. So that is risk management. As far as the risk management program here at Newport Mesa, it includes the Health and Welfare Program, workers' compensation, property and liability, loss prevention, safety and emergency planning. And we manage those areas with a really lean staff. There's me. We have a workers' compensation supervisor, Miguel Andrewano. We've got a benefit supervisor, Avette Deng, who is brand-new to the district. This is her first week, so we're very lucky to have her. And also, very lucky to have Vicki Wyman, who was our previous benefit supervisor, who was assisting in the transition of Avette. And then we have two benefits techs. We have Daniella Logan and Crystal Cruz, and they split the alphabet and support our employees through the benefits program. Now, I think when you start to look at the definition of risk management, you start to look at the different areas of risk management. It really doesn't do it justice because there is risk in every single department within a school district and really within a employer in general. And there's a lot of different categories of risk that we have to be aware of. There's operational risk, market risk, legal, environmental, reputational, brand, liability, financial, property loss, and strategic. So when you see those different categories, you can really see how throughout a district, you're going to have those types of potential issues. And a really good risk management program starts to bring their activities, their processes into every part of the organization and create systems of how to identify these things and how to prevent them. So the kind of the concept of how we do that, and what we try to build into different processes within the district, is based on a risk management cycle. And it doesn't matter what the activity is. You establish the context. You do a risk assessment, which includes identifying risk, analyzing the risk, and then evaluating the risk. And then you apply risk treatments or risk controls. And throughout this entire process, you communicate and consult with your stakeholders throughout the district and also your external stakeholders. And you monitor and review the outcomes. Did you achieve reducing risk to an acceptable level? And if not, you go back and you start to do it again. And even if you did, you're continuously evaluating those outcomes to see if they can get better and if you can continuously improve. As far as why we need it, I've included five major benefits of adopting a good risk management system and approach, but this is really the tip of the iceberg. I mean, I'm sure Superintendent Lee Sung, I'm sure trustees, principals, district staff, myself, we all have different benefits that we see from good risk management. But what I came up with is it really creates a safe and secure environment for all staff, students, and visitors. And I really believe that a secure and safe environment leads to success, whether it's success of your staff in performing their job, success of students as far as feeling safe and secure in their environment and learning. It leads to success. It also enhances management. Good risk management processes lead to good outcomes when it comes to the different departments. So it makes their jobs easier. It increases the stability of business operations while also decreasing legal liability. And what I mean by stability is when you have risk management issues, it starts to create interruptions in what you do, and instability, and that's problems. It provides protection from events that are detrimental to both the district and the environment. And it improves financial management and promotes the efficient use of limited resources. And this is really important to me, that all employers have limited resources, whether it's time, whether it's financial, it's not completely unlimited. So because of that, we really need to funnel resources towards your highest risk, funnel resources towards the issues that are going to have the biggest bang for the buck, and also funnel resources in a way that it ends up supporting what we're here to do, which is promote learning. As far as the current status of the risk management program, you know, the district hasn't had a Director of Risk Management or a risk management program in over 10 years. So because of that, there's a lot of work to be done. It's, I'd call it decentralized. It's a little more reactive than proactive. It is more activity-based than having a true program. But what I'll tell you is that when I came into the district, one of the things I was most impressed with, because I knew this is what I was coming into in the job. I knew it had been vacant for over 10 years. What I was impressed with is through the decentralized approach, there were a lot of people really doing really great things throughout the district that were risk management activities, whether it's maintenance and operations, facilities, transportation, your purchasing manager or director that is fairly new to the district. There was a lot of really great things being done. So it really gave me a good foundation to come into and start to pull it together into centralized activities and being more proactive and really being a true risk management program. So that's kind of my goals of where we're headed, is doing those things. So to me, one of the first steps of pulling this together into a centralized program was to create a strategic vision and some very high-level objectives to build the program off of. So the first objective is fostering collaborative relationships and partnerships and empowering people to make a positive enduring contribution to the health and safety culture. So identifying those stakeholders, working with the labor groups, with the directors and principals, and really involving them in the program. Because my experience has been pushing programs out of a risk management office without involving stakeholders. It doesn't get the buy-in you need, and it doesn't empower them and make them feel a part of it, and typically, it's not very successful. Objective number two is leading the educational sector in the application of risk management strategies that support education, including the emerging risks of new activities. So to me, this is evaluating the suitability and effectiveness of the current risk management methods and processes, improving the risk management framework by adopting a streamlined approach of the processes, and proactively identifying the leading causes of injuries, claims, lawsuits, and implementing targeted programs to address those. Objective number three is implementing a health and safety management system with a focus on continuous improvement. And that continuous improvement, again, gets back to using resources efficiently, focusing on your highest risk. If you focus on those, that risk is going to drop down lower as far as your entire list of risks throughout your district. And then you come back and you start to focus on what moves to the top. And if you keep doing that, you continuously improve as a district and do it in a way that really maximizes the resources you have. Objective number four is applying innovative technological solutions to assist in the measuring, reporting, and managing of risk management information. Really, this is migrating risk management system and processes to electronic platforms. And you may not recognize that you did this at the last meeting, but you already started to support me in doing a lot of these objectives. At the last meeting, you approved a contract service agreement with a safety management system software. And that software is going to start to be what we build a centralized program around. It's going to be able to provide data and dashboards and information to communicate with the Newport Mesa community. And it's really going to start to centralize the activities. So thank you for the support for that. And then the final objective I have is making a significant contribution to improving the health and well-being of staff and students. And this really ties in with the Health and Welfare Program, the Benefits Program. Part of that program is the Wellness Program. So this is really targeting that health and wellness of our employees and supporting them in those ways. And really, what I wanted to do with this presentation is start to give you a foundation that we can build off of, that we can have future conversations about risk management, and really just have it be fairly high-level and in the future, talk a lot more about this. So with that, that ends my report, and I'll answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Do we have questions?
I'm so impressed. I don't have any questions yet. I always qualify that because I almost always do. But wow, thank you so much. I do have one. How can we help you, other than just to prove the software that came up? Is there something the board can do that would assist you in doing this? Because I can see where your department helps raise the boat for all departments.
Yeah, I think at this point, you've given me the support I need. I think in the future, I'll be bringing items to you that, again, will lead towards kind of bringing this risk management program together. And also, I see in the future, us having more conversations about, just as a district, more discussions about what our tolerance for risk is. And as a whole, you being involved in those decisions to help guide what that is, so that the program's built around that.
Thank you.
And I have to say, from the short time you've been here, I think we all can sense already the impact that you've started to have on the district. I think we all can sense already the impact that you've started to have on the district. And just the, you know, when you talk about improving financial management and better, more efficient use of resources, I get the feeling that that is happening with some of the programs you put in place. So I just feel it's a, a safety net to have this position. And, and your enthusiasm for it is, is really an added plus. Trustee Crane, did you have a question?
I know, I know trustee Barto had a question.
Oh, my question was just, now that COVID is perhaps not the number one thing that takes up all of your time, what are some of the risk challenges that you anticipate as a school district over the next, say, three to five years?
Well, I'll tell you, as, as far as the focus goes, it's going to be really around injury prevention and workers' compensation. This district has a lower probability or a lower frequency of injuries than other districts. When you benchmark against other districts, we have a higher severity. So because of that, we do, I do see that as an area that by first of all, building out the safety management system, getting better information that we're making decisions off of and doing those targeted controls and, and programs to address the types of injuries we're having and issues we're having. I see that as being an area that we can start to make an impact fairly quickly. Other areas that really stand out to me, and, and this is, this is throughout all districts. This is really, really a big topic right now, just in, in schools nationwide, is sexual assault and molestation is a, a topic that is, first of all, such an impact on, on the victims, but also such an impact on the districts. So I think that's an area to really focus on, on our programs and also security and safety of the schools.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
I thought you may mention cybersecurity, some sort of protection from hackers and such. Is that part of your department?
It's, it's not part of my department, but it is one of the risks that we get involved in. Really, I partner with, with our IT department, who is also, first of all, doing a great job as far as staying aware of, of what is out there, working to protect the district from what is out there. And also just continuing to put additional controls in place. So we, we discuss it and, and they're working hard on it every day.
Any other questions? Trustee Anderson?
I just wanted to make a comment. Um, thank you. I love the strategic plan. That really helps us understand where you're coming from and your thinking. And I would love to, if there are policies that you hear about or know about specifically that we can assist you and to carry forth some of that vision, please let us know. Because I think your position at this department is essential. And I, it, while we didn't have it for 10 years, I'm glad we do now. And I think I'm just really looking forward to seeing it continue to grow. Thank you. And also thank you for 16 A10. I really, I, I love that it's being assessed. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other question? Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming tonight.
Nice to meet you live and in person.
I know. It is really nice to be in person again.
12D report on Back Bay High School. Superintendent Lee Sung, do you want to start this off?
Absolutely. So first of all, I want to say that we all really appreciate the work that our staff does and our principal Wagner does at Back Bay to support our kids. Some great kids who need extra support and extra care. And they have a staff and many of us were at their graduation not too long ago. And what a wonderful experience that is every year to see the obstacles and the challenges that the kids overcome to earn their high school diploma. And there have been a lot of discussions over the last several months and very deeply over the last several weeks to bring this presentation to you, to tell you about some proposals that we would like to bring forward formally to the board at our next board meeting, hopefully. And so to do that, we have Dr. Baumeister here, who'd be coming up to the podium to get a presentation ready. And while he does that, what, what this proposal is, is to again further help our kids earn that diploma and more importantly, connect them to be on high school and beyond that diploma. So they can move into successful careers and colleges and have a very bright future. So with that, Dr. Baumeister.
I got the most difficult part out of the way. I got the presentation up. President Yelsey, members of the board, Superintendent Lee Sung, cabinet members, distinguished guests. It is my pleasure tonight to give you this report tonight on Back Bay High School on behalf of our team. A little over a year and a half ago, Dr. Navarro charged Vanessa Gailey and myself to research continuation high schools throughout the county and come back with recommendations to increase opportunities for students at Back Bay to graduate and have post-secondary success. So obviously we quickly added Principal Mike Wagner to our team. And this year we added principal from Coronel Mar, Josh Hill to our team, really for a couple of reasons. One is so we'd have a comprehensive high school principal on our team. But the other is Josh was a continuation principal at Sarah High School in Capo Valley for a number of years. So he brought the expertise to our team as well. We also tapped into the expertise of Dr. DiAgostino, who has worked with Back Bay for a number of years and is just a great guy to have on any team. So he was part of our team as well. So tonight, after bringing these recommendations to our cabinet, we wanted to bring them to the board. And again, this recommendation is to improve Back Bay's high school students' opportunities to graduate and have post-secondary success. So the components of our plan, first of all, is a full-time counselor going from four days to five days a week, a focus on high-quality instruction, to adjust the elective credits, which would adjust the graduation credits to 190 and going from the trimester system to the quarter system. And now I'll go over the rationale behind all of these recommendations. So for a full-time counselor, the focus for this extra day a week would be a focus on a post-secondary plan created for each student. So this council would be meeting with each student at Back Bay High School to create a post-secondary success plan for each student. They would also be coming up with an ROP or a career interest survey and then encourage students to enroll in that area of interest in either an ROP class or a local junior college class. We believe that students that graduate from Back Bay, having completed either an ROP class or a junior college class, will have greater post-secondary success. The next part of our plan is the quarter system. And I want to kind of reiterate what Superintendent Lee Sung said. The purpose of Back Bay High School is to help these kids that have fallen down at our comprehensive high schools, that have fallen behind in their credits for a number of reasons. But it's really to help them get back on their feet and to help them catch up on their credits. So in the trimester system right now, in taking five classes, they get 25 credits three times a year, which is 75 credits a year. At the comprehensive high school, they have six classes, which is 30. A lot of times they'll be given a seventh class, a credit recovery class, or they can make up 35 credits in a semester, which would be 70 credits in a year. So as you see at Back Bay, they can only make up five more credits than they could at their comprehensive high school. So our recommendation is to go to the quarter system where they can make up those 25 credits four times a year and have 100 credits. So those kids that really fell behind in their freshman and sophomore year now have a greater opportunity to be able to graduate. Another important part about the quarter system is a more seamless transition for the, from their comprehensive site coming into Back Bay. Right now, when kids leave their site, they leave either at the quarter or the semester, they're coming in at the middle of a trimester. And so it's really hard for the student and for the teacher to catch them up with the rest of the class. So it would be a much more seamless transition for the students and the teachers. The next part, and this is, there's a, it's kind of a busy slide, obviously. There's a lot of things on here. But I wanted to focus on this third column where it says classes and minutes. If you look, we put Coronel Mar, but this could be any one of our comprehensive high schools. So at our comprehensive high schools on the block now, they would have a, a class of 90 minutes on a Monday. They would have that same class again on a Thursday for 90 minutes. And then on Wednesday, they would have that same class for 30 minutes. That's the, the day that they see all of their kids. And so the classes are shorter. So each of our students would be sitting in that class for 210 minutes a week. And then if you times that by the 18 weeks in a semester, our kids would, at the comprehensive, would sit in each seat of each class for 63 hours to get their five credits in the semester system. If you go down to Back Bay and if you look at the third column, at Back Bay, they would have their, the classes five days a week for 57 minutes, that same class. So they would sit in that class for 285 minutes in a week. If you timed that by the nine weeks in a quarter, it's 43 hours to get those five credits in a quarter. So as you see, it's 20 hours less than our comprehensive sites. But if you compare it to all the continuation schools you see below, even Silverado, which would be the last school left on the trimester, we would have 43 hours for five credits versus their 42. If you look at all of the other quarter systems, 34, 32, 27. So our kids would be in their seats for quite a few more hours than the other comprehensive high schools. So just in transparency, we wanted to make sure that you saw that our kids at Back Bay would have less hours for those five credits than our comprehensives, but more than the other continue high school, continuation high schools around the county. So adjusting the elective credits, which would adjust the overall credits to 190. The one thing that I want to make sure that I'm really clear on is while we're reducing the number of elective credits, the kids at Back Bay will have the same core graduation requirements as all of the others' kids in all of our other comprehensive classes. They'll still have four years of English, three years of social studies, two years of math, two years of science, two years of PE, their health and the applied skills, which is a third year of math or science or an ROP and CTE class. So they will have the same graduation core requirements as all of our comprehensive schools. The difference is instead of 70 elective credits, they will have 50 elective credits. And so again, by reducing those elective credits, it gives the kids at Back Bay a chance to concentrate more on their core curriculum as well. The last thing, and we believe this is the most important piece, is a focus on high-quality instruction at Back Bay High School. And so we're bringing in a consultant to work with Principal Wagner and with the teachers to focus on the critical content. In going from a trimester to a quarter system, we want to make sure that our students are getting the most important information to learn in each core content class. And so the work will be to align this quarter curriculum to the standards and also to create assessments to measure academic success. We want to make sure that the kids are learning the materials. We want to have those assessments in place. And then finally, the focus on continuous instruction. This consultant is going to work with them for the entire year with Principal Wagner and the teachers to give them a foundations to continue this work moving forward. This is not a one and done. This is going to be a long process and they're going to have to work over this, over a number of years. At all of our high schools, really, we need to do this as well. But at Back Bay, we think this is one of the really important pieces of this plan is to have high-quality instruction, make kids, make sure our kids are learning the most important things. And so that is the Back Bay plan. And we believe that these four things will give students at Back Bay greater opportunities to graduate and have post-secondary success. So as Superintendent Lee Sung said, we're asking for your support and we'll be bringing back some policy revisions to the policy revision team before the next board meeting in July. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Trustee Crane.
I, for the record, I am so thrilled that we are focusing on the change at Back Bay Montevista. I think it's going to be wonderful setting the kids up for success. And I've been hearing about the quarter system and I'm glad that we are switching to that. And I'm also very, I love the comparison chart because it still shows that we are maintaining a level of excellence at all of our schools, including Back Bay Montevista. And I love the fact that we're going to have a step up in counseling, focusing on a career path or other paths that are not necessarily the four-year colleges or two-year. And love the fact that we are also providing the professional development support for the principal and the staff. Because if we want to do it right, we need to do it right. And so I'm glad that we are investing the time, the money and the effort in doing so. Congratulations. Love it.
Any other questions?
Did I cover it all?
Pardon?
Did I cover it at all?
I think, I think you hit all the key points.
I, I'll just add that this is really valid, and I've said this before, but just to say it on the, the public record, it's really validating to see what a lot of our Back Bay, Montevista students have asked me for, including some of our student board members, and said, this is something we really need. So it's wonderful to see that we're responding to that.
Justin Matoye.
I have a question regarding the electives. I think the plan is fabulous. If a student is very successful at Back Bay because the program is so rich and, and targeted, do they still get the option to take electives that are offered at Back Bay? Or their, are electives, all electives going away completely?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. If there's electives that they would like to take, they can certainly take them. And while the, the graduation requirement is 190, certainly they can graduate with more credits. Like they can at any of our comprehensive high schools.
Perfect. Thank you.
So as we, as we know that there are some kids, the electives are the reason why they come to school.
Right. I didn't want to make it, I wanted to elaborate on the fact that we're not taking electives away from them. We're just helping kids that are, you're, you're only this many credits away. Don't, you, you don't need that one right now, but if you do this, you can graduate. So yes, that's perfect. Thank you.
It's one of the reasons why we're doing the ROP survey too, is because we want to do a better job of offering the classes they'd really like to take as well.
There you go. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. I thank you so much for this change. I think it is very needed. And I'm just looking forward to, to really, I think this is something that Mr. Lee Sung brought up, just really raising the bar for the students that are there and getting to know them personally. Because I think that is one of the components too, for these students to be successful. And so if it looks like ROP, great, but I think there's also a lot of partnerships. I know at one point the Chamber of Commerce is, and the Rotary and lots of our local groups have been really interested and wanting to work with Back Bay and the students there and providing internships and a pipeline for jobs. And so I would also love to see that be included in this as well.
Great idea.
Okay. I, I was just going to say one thing and then I'll turn it back over to you. I too think it's a wonderful opportunity for our students. And I have to admit, when I first heard about reducing the number of credits, I'm thinking, oh, we're going to make it easier for those kids to graduate or, or to get through. And this clearly is not the case because I think for all our high schools, we often out in the community will see people and they'll say, oh, that person graduated from a Newport Mesa school. This is one of our schools and we want to be proud of every student who graduates from Back Bay as well. And I think this gives them a, an increased number of opportunities to be successful and to move on. So I, I think it's a fabulous work that you've done.
All right. First of all, I want to thank Dr. Baumeister and the work of all of our committee members to put this plan together. And I, I do want to make some comments here because I will admit, I push, I push back a lot. And the reason why I did is because a diploma means something. It means that a, a student has attained something at a high level. And when a student graduates from Newport Mesa with a diploma, that means something. And I want to make sure that the standard that we uphold here in the district, whether it's at Back Bay or any of our other high schools, is at a high level. But we do recognize through this discussion that Back Bay is different. And through those discussions, it wasn't just about lowering the number of credits. It wasn't just about lowering the number of minutes or hours in a class. You know, that by itself would feel like it was lowering the bar and lowering the standards. But what came out of these discussions and through the team was, as you can see, it is a comprehensive plan to support students who attend Back Bay and eventually get a diploma. And what I'm excited about that is coupled all together, it allows students. it allows students to focus on the things that I think are the most impactful for them is to connect with the real world, connect with their life beyond high school. And that's what we need to focus on. And without that, then I would not be supportive of this. With that, I'm highly supportive of it because that's what our students need, and that's what they need to be successful adults after they get diploma and and move on. So so I'm excited about bringing this back. I'm encouraging them to have that ready for July because I would love to be here to see that get approved by the board. Okay, I just want you all to hear where I stand on this.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have a jam-packed agenda with all these reports, but they're all really great things going on in our district. So thanks, thanks to everyone who was involved. Community input on non-agendized items, trustee Matoye.
Speakers wishing to address the board on non-agendized items have submitted the appropriate comment card on the district website by eleven A M. today, Tuesday, June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one. Comments are limited to three minutes per comment, up to twenty minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person.
And we have one comment card received on non-agendized items. Ms. Mesquod.
You'll see the speaker is actually not logged in.
Oh, they're not here. Okay. All right, then we have no speakers in the queue. Superintendent comments.
All right. Well, good evening, everybody. I have a, I think, fairly short report tonight. But first of all, I want to acknowledge that we opened our summer programs this week, yesterday, in fact. And we started our extended school year for students with special needs, which is always a great program and opportunity for our students to continue their learning through the summer period. But we also opened nine elementary sites to our first session of our summer program. And it's our biggest program ever. We got a full report from Lori Hogard, who's our administrator overseeing the summer programs. And yesterday was highly successful. A couple of logistical things to work out, as there always is. But to put on a program like this that we've never done before at this scale is nothing short of amazing. So first, I want to acknowledge Lori Hogard. I want to acknowledge all the administrators who are involved in supporting and building this program. But I I I do want to recognize, and I know President Fairbanks from N M F T also acknowledges, but this program would not have happened if it weren't for our teachers and our classified employees to step up and serve our students during the summer. It was a long, hard year, as we all know. And to turn around a few days later and get right back into the classroom, working with our kids, I think is very, very commendable. So I appreciate everybody who is working our summer programs this summer. Really, really proud of all of them. And of course, every department that is supporting the programs. We have nutrition services going on. We have bus services going on, all the technology. There's a lot of great things happening. I shared a picture with the board the other day of the STEM truck. Right? So there's some great resources there there Friday. Because we want summer not only to be an exceptional learning experience, we want it to be fun for the kids, too. And I think that's what they've really sought out to do, and I think in the end it will be like that. And so this first session is four weeks, and then we will have another session, a second session, starting on July nineteenth, that's more focused on enrichment. So we're very excited about that. And then we have high schools that also started this week. And those classes are focused on students that need to get caught up in their in their credit so they don't get fall behind. So a lot going on this summer. And again, just very, very proud of everybody responsible for putting that on. The next area is an update on COVID guidance. And I hope one day we will have a board meeting without any updates on COVID guidance and and protocols. But a lot has happened, actually, since even our last meeting a week ago. So what has happened is Cal OSHA approved some updated standards for employees. And that was actually a very welcomed change of a decision they had made earlier on. So we're pleased with that. We are unfortunately still awaiting some very important guidance from the California Department of Public Health and specific guidance related to K twelve schools. So that's the one we're we're really waiting on. It is something that they are waiting for the C D C to make an update on their guidance for K twelve schools. So we're hoping to get that with the next week, week and a half. And we will be able to see that and give more definitive information to all of our parents, our community and staff. But meanwhile, meanwhile, this is what I want to announce tonight. There are some things that we can move on right away. And so I want to share with you that we prepared a message that will be going out tomorrow, first to staff and then to parents, and making some announcement of some changes that we can do right now. The first one is no mask required for students outdoors. Okay, let me repeat that. Okay. No mask for students outdoors. Okay. This was due to a California Department of Public Health updated memo, wasn't the full-on guidance, it was just one memo related specifically to face coverings. And it said that for schools, that masks are still required inside, but outside masks are not required for students. So we're going to make that announcement that in our summer programs, that would take effect on Thursday. So we announce it tomorrow, and it will take effect on Thursday. Isn't that great for our kids? They get to be outside and not have. Now, of course, if kids want to wear a mask, if parents want their children to wear a mask, by all means, they can still do that. Okay? The other area that we will be making announcement is in the area of Plexiglas between students. Okay, so same thing, effective Thursday, the Plexiglas will start to be removed. Okay? We've got to go through a process of, of, you know, dismantling them and storing them and and potentially discarding some of the ones that are are not in good shape. But we will begin to do that, and that will be effective on Thursday as well. And then the third area, which is something that's more geared towards employees. We had taken the added safety protocol to do temperature checks for our employees. And so also effective Thursday, that we will no longer be doing the temperature checks, which is what we categorize as active screening. And we'll be moving to a passive screening process where everybody still needs to attest that they are not, you know, don't have the COVID symptoms, hasn't been around somebody. You know, those standard questions that were asked every single morning. We still do that, but we do that on our own. So no more temperature checks for employees as of Thursday. So at least we feel these three things are things that are moving in the right direction, the positive direction, back to normalcy. And I'll be making that announcement in writing to our staff and then to our our parents of the summer programs. Okay, the other part that we are currently working on is a verification system for vaccinations for our employees. And this is tied to the recent OSHA guidance that was just approved that there will be different rules for regarding masks related to vaccination status. So we're working on a system to be able to do that. And once we can verify whether employee has been vaccinated or not vaccinated, we will be able to implement some of those rules aligned to guidance in terms of wearing masks or not wearing masks. Okay, so that leads me to the final thing is we are also working to make changes here at board meetings. Okay, how about a pause for that? You know, we've gotten used to masks, but you know what? It's time. It it's a lot harder to hear our speakers. And once we go through that process, we would also be able to take our masks off in this work setting, and social distancing would be relaxed, et cetera. So we're hope, we're working to get this all in place, possibly as early as our next meeting. But there's a lot of pieces to do, and so I'm not making guarantees. But that's what we're working towards to get back to normalcy. We also want all of our trustees back at the dais. We want our executive at the table and at some point looking to invite our public back into our board meetings. So all of this is what we're working on, and we will have more information to all of you and to our public in our upcoming meetings. Okay, so that's my report for tonight.
Forward progress. Yay. Community input on agendized items, trustee Matoye.
Speakers wishing to address the board on agendized items have submitted the appropriate comment card on the district website by eleven A M. today, Tuesday, June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one. Comments are limited to three minutes per comment, up to twenty minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another purpose person, and we will take public comments as we approach the items on the agenda.
We have one comment card received on discussion action seventeen F, amend modify purchasing power component that refers to Consumer Price Index regarding the Endowment Fund from the Irvine Company. And we will take that comment when we reach it on the discussion action item. So we now move to the consent calendar. And before we have a motion, that we've already moved sixteen A thirteen to discussion action, and we have pulled sixteen A seventeen. So do I have a motion?
Move approval of the consent calendar. Second.
Moved by trustee Matoye, seconded by trustee Wagen. Roll call.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Berto.
Yes.
Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Okay, discussion action seventeen A, adopt the Local Control and Accountability Plan. Ms. Gailey.
Good luck.
They're trying to warm up the room.
Yes, a little frigid in here. Well, President Yelsey and Superintendent Lee Sung, trustees, members of the community, we put forth before you an almost complete L cap last go around and submitted today, we have a couple of updated elements to our L cap. Starting at the end, we made a few adjustments to the essay at the end. Our partners at Orange County Department of Ed pointed out to us that we had a few items in there that although supporting our students were not necessarily paid for from our L C F F funds. So we've removed those items, and now the expenditure tables bulleted list matches our essay at the very end. The other thing is there was some comment and input provided around the metrics. Specifically, we were looking at our smarter balanced targets as well as our graduation rates. And so we think we found a happy medium in making an adjustment upward without making it the largest adjustment upward, and we think that it's a very good stretch goal. And so as I shared before, our typical approach has been to look at a three-year five percentage point growth, and we upped that to ten percentage points, except for a few of our our graduation rates. One in particular would be for our students with disabilities. And looking at that number, it was mathematically impossible to go the ten percent because, as you recall, it's about graduating with a diploma. And some of our students don't get a diploma. They just, they don't get that opportunity, although a certificate is a wonderful accomplishment. So we felt like this was a good, happy medium on on the request to take another look at our metrics. We did fix a few spelling and punctuation errors, but I think y'all will be okay without that.
Okay. I have a motion on this.
Motion to adopt seventeen A, the Local Control and Accountability Plan. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Do I have any more questions on this?
I just had a comment. Thank you for this, and thank you for taking so much time to speak with us about it. I was just wondering if for next year, the board can consider doing a study session on the L cap so we can talk through the possibility of board-aligned goals because I know the timeline is really tight. But I think it would be really great if we, when the, when the stakeholder input is done, you know, maybe early May, and then we have a really quick study session. And then Vanessa, you know, has already formulated a lot of the draft, but then we can have a board discussion. I would really welcome that.
And I'm sure Vanessa Gailey would love to have a study session.
I really would. It would be a pleasure and an honor. But we could even do it earlier than that. We start our stakeholder input as early as February, and so don't feel like it's bound to the the May activities.
And we also, and we always, when we're doing our calendar, we always adjust for like
Build in.
extra time in a month that we can have study sessions. So that would be a good one. Thank you. So I have a motion moved by trustee Wagen, seconded by trustee Crane. And it's a roll call vote.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Berto.
Yes.
Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
And you're not going anywhere.
No, I'm well, not, not exactly. I forgot my hard copy.
Well, she's going to get it. Seventeen B, approve Local Control and Accountability Plan, federal addendum.
Yes, so this plan that we've put on the agenda is a component of the L cap. And so the actions and services described in the Local Control and Accountability Plan, we've included. But this plan template is specific to federal titles one, two, three, and four. It is the state template. It's what a state reviewer is used to looking at, and that's why we kept to that format, which is they'll they'll recognize the colors. And of course, when you have a reviewer, you want them to be very familiar and happy. So this plan was originally approved in twenty seventeen, eighteen, and we've dusted it off a few times, submitted it through federal program monitoring. And so this is our latest iteration. We wanted to acknowledge some of the adjustments and things that we're expending in titles one, two, and three. And so this really outlines that. It is not a requirement of this plan to include dollars, the way that we do in the L cap with expenditure tables. But you can crosswalk it, and I'm happy to walk anyone through both plans. But if you look at the expenditure tables at the end of the L cap and you look for the column that says federal funds, then most of these, they don't call out the cost, sorry, the cost center, the the funding source, but it will say that it's federal.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved? Do I need to read it out?
No, I. You can if you want.
I move to approve Local Control and Accountability Plan, federal addendum, item seventeen B.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
Motion moved by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Wagen. Any further questions or comments? Okay, roll call.
On page sixteen, it's it's the section that is student transitions, which I had never seen that before. And it said, it says, you know, we currently do not plan to allocate Title I funds for the activities. And one of them is for coordination with higher education employers and other local partners, which I think would be great as we're thinking more about Back Bay. But then also to increase student access to early college high school. And we do some of those, and I know we don't necessarily use Title I funds for that, but I'm wondering if we can. And then the second part of that is assisting schools and identifying and serving gifted and talented students, assist schools in developing effective school library programs. And so I was just wondering how those, we haven't classically used Title I funds for either of those sections. But student transition seems like something that has been communicated through some of the stakeholder input. So just wondering, how how does that process work? Like if when would we when would we plan to allocate Title I funds for each of those sections?
Well, we typically do a needs assessment every year with our schools. They do a needs assessment process through the school plan. And so if there were things that started to come up in that regard, we would look to that fund. I would say that at present, we have so many other funding streams that tackle this issue. And the the benefit of not relying on Title I is that it's not limited to Title I schools. So some of my schools that would be in the middle and qualifying would be left out if we were to devote the Title I funds specifically to that. Another thing is, we've really devoted a lot of our resources in recent years, especially at the elementary level. So we provide a higher per pupil allocation for our elementary schools so that they can do more and also because they have fewer students. But we've put quite a few funds into putting a full-time reading teacher at each of our Title I schools as well as a, an army of part-time hourly teachers. And then the sites also get their own allocations that they can make decisions on as well. So we could explore that. In doing so, we would have to pare back on other things.
Okay, yeah, it just was interesting to me that it specifically called out the bridge between like early child into elementary and then elementary into middle school. So that's something that interests me a lot. So I would love, maybe next year, if we have an LCAP study session, to talk through that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Berto.
Yes.
Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Ursoylu.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gailey. 17C, adopt resolution 310621, all funds June budget. Mr. Trader.
There have been no changes. We still recommend a positive certification.
That was the shortest financial report I've ever. But thank you very much. Obviously, we all have our books. Some of them brought them with them and tonight, and it is very detailed. We really appreciate the narrative you give and all the detail. And thank you very much for producing such a great budget.
You're so welcome.
I had a couple of questions, but I got them to you late. So it's no, if you don't have the answer, please don't feel put on the spot. My question was just regarding the Prop 98 funds and the upside down stuff that's going on in the legislature, how that impacts our budget going forward. But don't feel like you have to like come up with that right now because I don't think I sent it to you till later this afternoon.
So trustee Berto brings up a really good point about Proposition 98 and its impact on us. And for the most part, being community funded, a lot of those gyrations that happen at state level really don't impact us. However, there are a few things, including special ed that they're dealing with, pension support, those kinds of things that do impact us. And however, we have not built in any of those assumptions because they have not passed their budget yet. So when the state passes their budget, then we'll come to you at first interim, and we will adjust our budget accordingly to align to the changes that the, that the state has made into their budget.
Thanks very much. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And in the past, we used to have a September budget. It was like the real budget and then the real budget part due. And, and the state took that away because that's when we would have made these adjustments, which would have seemed to be more logical because it was closer, but.
And that's another really good point, trustee Matoye. Because, because of that change, it's taken us a bit of time to really make a mind shift there. And so you're going to see at first interim, it's going to be a much more robust report. We're going to put in adjustments to, so you'll see the adjustments in the assumptions and those kinds of things that we generally haven't done in the past because we did do a September budget that included all of the changes in the state's budget. So we're going to do, try to do a much more robust job in explaining those changes that have been made since the state adopted their budget. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So would we reverse, because I know last year, I think we got one in December. Would we be getting that in September again, or when do we anticipate?
So the first interim goes through October 31st, and then we report to you in December on that. We can certainly give you more updates as we go along through other channels, if that's what the superintendent would like.
That was one of my questions, is what reasonable expectation do we have for our reporting schedule? Because I know so much is changing with the state budget, and it's just such a different year than usual.
At your discretion, we, we will provide information to you. The state will adopt their budget by June 30th, and we'll know by then, so we can certainly provide you with an informal update. That's.
Those are, the two formal updates are December and June. That's when
Yeah.
it's required.
Yeah.
I'm just, I was just asking for more, since it's just an unusual year and things are.
It's really, yes, things are, there is a lot of dramatic changes, more so than we've seen in the past. Yeah, it's a good point.
Okay, trustee Urso.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions, and I apologize. I try to get them to you ahead of time usually, but this has been a ridiculous week. So if you don't have the answers, that's okay. I'm just curious, actually, it was one of the assumptions that made me just sort of wonder. On page 59, beginning in 2013, 14, it says that the, the allocation for, was doubled for art from 10,000 to 20,000, and for sports from 30 to 113,000? How did that happen, like at a budget meeting like this? Or how does that jump go from 30 to 113,000? Is that something that happened during budgeting season? Or how do those jumps take place? Just as a newbie, I'm just curious.
Right, we, so part of that included a decision to change the way we do athletic trainers. And so we, we provided the sites with funding to make that change to more robust athletic training program.
Okay, so it was like a process implementation. That's great. Then my other question would be on page 197, where it talks about GATE. I see that we're going from about 13,000 down to six, so sort of in half. And I'm just curious sort of what our philosophy has been around GATE and how that decrease is pretty substantial to cut it in half. But is there other funding that's compensating for this? Is there another way that GATE is expected to take place? Or is it that after the state cut funding for it, it's kind of just a non-existent thing for the district?
Yeah, I haven't had any information on the rationale for that. If Mr. Trader does or Miss Gailey does, feel free to come up and respond to that. Like she does.
So at one time, there was a state categorical, and it did fund GATE. And so in the district, we've maintained a couple of components. It's tapered off, obviously, in the last two years. But there has been training over time, and we've contracted with some folks from OCDE to provide some GATE strategies training. And then we always provide the standard assessments. And so there is a small cost that's associated with that. For additional information and the historical piece of it, you'd have to talk to Dr. Cursor.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, because I'm just curious, looking at the trend line, how it's just sort of angled toward zero. So is the end goal that there's zero on GATE? Or where does that come from? So I'll ask him about that, but thank you.
Any other questions? Trustee Anderson.
Thank you. I was just wondering too, I know, you know, even prior.
Could you move your mic, please?
Yes. It's ricocheting off me, so it sounds very loud to me, so sorry. I know we've been looking at declining enrollment for a few years, and I think there are significant changes. You know, we're trying to guess, you know, right now for fall and for the future. And I was just wondering if there's any way that we can kind of connect what we're looking for with our local cities and do an overlay with what they're projecting? Because I know Newport Beach and Costa Mesa are both doing housing studies, and there are a lot of components that have similar outcomes. And I think it would be really interesting, since we represent both of those, what the three to five-year demographics look like, so would best be able to plan. And I think for us specifically, it would make a lot of sense if it was by high school zone, too, so then we could break it down even further. So I'm wondering if that would be something that, like, what kind of a timeline? Like, what, when would be the best time to possibly do that? Would it be like late fall? Would it be after October 30th? When would that kind of information be best for us to ask again about?
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good point because this will align to the budget schedule. And so a great time to start looking at is in January.
That sounds great. And then I was wondering, too, I love this chart that shows all of our grants and special funding this year. And I was wondering if we could get an update as to what is still on the table? I know there is, a lot of the money is going towards our summer program.
What page?
23.
Thank you.
The one that says COVID response with the grants. Just like how much is still available, how much we still need to use, and what some of those end dates are, you know? Like, are we going to have enough that we would possibly be able to do a summer school program next year? Is, you know, are we going to have used up most of our money, you know, by January? I would love to see just, you know, a one-page sheet that has our funds. And then I was wondering, too, on page 24, it shows the federal revenue going down pretty dramatically. And I was just wondering how, what, what that was related to.
Yeah, so you're noticing there, the, the way that the federal government has structured when they're paying us. And so you're seeing kind of a, an increase and then a sharp drop off. And we don't have a whole lot of control over that. It's just their, their scheduling of when the money's going to come to us. And as you're aware, we don't, they say we don't match program to cash flow. We don't make program exist or be dependent on cash flow. We cover that to, to make that happen.
We anticipate that that will continue to go down? Or it's just at this point in time because they haven't paid us, you know, real time now? That's what that number reflects?
If, federal funding tends to be fairly stable. So, yeah, you're going to see this up mark, and it's going to go back to being stable again.
Okay, yeah, it just seemed a bit lower than this time in past years. And I was wondering, too, because, you know, one of the positives of declining enrollment is we would have more money per student hypothetically. And so I'm just wondering if we have some plans in place to, you know, distribute that money equitably and how that connects with the LCAP? Because it seems like that that might be something that we might not have to use as many Title I funds for additional things or student transitions. So I was just wondering if we, we really had a, how we will use some of that federal money in new ways.
Well, it will all, will all be aligned with the LCAP process, and the budget will align to that. So in your chats with Vanessa and our stakeholder feedback, we, I'm certain we'll find a way to make that happen.
That was just something to me that came up as I was looking at it again.
It's a, it's a really good point in that we do recognize as enrollment goes down, per pupil, costs will go up. And you can see that, too, in the budget book, that our people, per pupil cost is going up.
And then I have one last question on page 21. For the transfers out, it looked like last year there was 8.8 million. Next year, it's 7.5, and then 11.8, and then 10. But this year, it's 24.9 million? Why, what is that 24.9 million for this year? Why is that so high?
So when, when times are good, that's the time to prepare for, for times that aren't not so good. And so you'll see there a fairly large transfer out in this year, 2021, to stabilize the district when all of this one-time money goes away. So there, there is some money that's going to fund 17 for stabilization. And that's a, that's a large part of that $25 million.
Yeah, that's, I was noticing the stabilization reserve was 17 million. And for this year, it's 13.7. And so one of the things I just, I'm concerned if we are saving too much and not using enough directly right now for our students and our classrooms. So that's why I wanted to see, too, the breakdown between among what, you know, grants we've gotten and where that money is allocated. Because I agree, we need to be, you know, conservative, but also not put it all into stabilization reserve or such, such a large amount. It's really dramatic.
And it, a good answer to that would be to look at a standard or a best practice. And the current best practice is to have reserves of 17% of expenditures and other transfers out, other uses. And we're very, we're, we're very close to that 17%. Not quite there, but very close.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I've always felt we shouldn't spend down more of our reserve than we need to. I think that's always been a safety net for us, and we want to continue with that. Any other questions? Trustee Urso.
Yes, I have one more question, comment. I'm not quite sure where, where it's headed yet, about the Estancia High School, the theater. So I see that it is the initial, the fund, you know, the, the measure, the, was it measure F? F Fund there, and it's already gone over 6 million that we've dipped into that special fund 40 for an additional 6 million that I know was approved in October 2019, I believe. But my concern is that Fund 40 doesn't have unlimited money. So I'm wondering, have we, do we have a plan or a cap or a end goal? Because now that that cost estimate was made back in October 2019, there's been, you know, COVID, global pandemic in between then and now that has skyrocketed, you know, steel prices and construction costs. And also, there's new guidelines for theaters from Ashry. There's just a lot of different factors going into, you know, constructing a mass theater like that. So that cost estimate from two years ago, almost, I worry if, how far off is that from reality? And do we have a plan to have a revised cost estimate? Because I worry about approving these budgets with these additional millions coming from this fund, and that fund's going to run out eventually. And sort of what's our end goal with that theater? Are we setting a cap of some kind? So I'd love to hear sort of what, what that project stands at right now.
Yeah, so the project is currently in DSA, as, as you all will recall from our most recent updates. And as we're coming to the completion of that process, we're also working to get updated cost estimates to really validate the concerns that you have. We all know these last couple of years, although there were contingencies included in those budgets, so there were contingencies there for unforeseen circumstances. There were also escalation based on inflation as a reasonable cost estimator would expect at the, at that time. This, these last couple of years have been unusual. So they're currently working on those estimates, and we anticipate that we will be able to have all of the money that's necessary to complete the project. But we will be bringing that in the very near future.
So those cost estimates, you're saying that we'll be able to see those in the next couple of months?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, that's very helpful because I'm, this really keeps me from sleeping at night a lot because I've, you know, I've been to the Estancia Theater, and it's a 200-person theater, and it, and it looks like with some renovation, it would be fine. So the idea of going outside and building this whole large one that was, I know, promised many years ago, given our limited budgets, was just, is always kind of looming over my mind. So I just want to make sure that we're responsible, given that we know prices are skyrocketing. And I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time concentrating.
But this wasn't a freezing.
I'm literally frozen right now. So, so yes, I just wanted to check on that. So thank you for saying that there's a new cost estimate coming, so that'll be really great to see.
Trustee Crane.
Mr. Holcomb, I'm also guessing that you do, since you, since this is a, a measure F, and there's a lot of covenants that you have to go by, that you do report these changes to the Citizen Oversight Committee as part of your responsibility, right?
Yes, that, that is part of the, the process. We, they meet on a quarterly basis during the year, and, and it's basically every three months. And so whatever is current at that point are the types of updates that they receive at that point. For you all, we bring you reports on the project as we hit the major milestones. And so, you know, don't know exactly what the schedule is for the cost estimate, but the intent is to get that cost estimated completed before we proceed further with the project. Make sure that we all understand where we are in funding the project, and I believe we'll be fine. Update you all on all of that, and then we can proceed to the next phase of the project.
Thank you. One last question. Is it possible, because I know when we, when the newbies joined the board, we had that discussion about all the different committees and liaisons to different committees and things and assignments like that. I'm wondering, has there ever been a board liaison to that Measure F committee that could, you know, kind of liaison between back and forth? Has that ever?
I believe that's a totally independent committee.
Yeah, part, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's totally independent, and those members come from various. areas of the community and different.
Categories.
Representatives.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I served.
It's very specific.
When, when I served on that committee ten, twelve years ago, we, we are definitely supposed to be independent of the board. That's the whole purpose. And so, yeah, that's, and that's why, when we have reports, public reports that we can listen to. But we don't serve on the committee or, or liaison.
That makes sense.
Okay, are there any more questions on the budget?
She just said so.
No, no, I said that makes a lot of sense, what, what Trustee Crane said. That makes perfect sense. Are there minutes available so we can read what that group does? Website?
There are minutes, yeah.
Okay, great.
Do I have a motion?
I will move. I move to approve the. I, I adopt, I move to adopt the resolution thirty-one dash oh-six dash twenty-one, all funds, June budget.
I will second.
Who is the second?
Trustee Barto.
Sorry, I can't, I can't wait till we can get rid of the Plexiglas.
It makes it echo here, it does.
Moved by Trustee Matoye, seconded by Trustee Barto.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee or Soylent?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Before we move to seventeen E, I just have to comment. Seventeen D, we moved up to the front of the agenda. So the student board members could leave if they wanted and they are still here.
I'm so excited!
Commend them for staying for this entire meeting. So thank you. It bodes well for our student board members for next year. Thank you both for, for being here. Okay, we'll move on to seventeen E. Approve the agreement for employment of interim superintendent between the Board of Education of the Newport Mesa Unified School District and Hank Bankser, Ph.D. We are pleased to announce that we are recommending Hank Bowser as our interim superintendent. And obviously, this is not a permanent position. He is someone who has served as superintendent for many years. He's been in interim before. We feel very comfortable with him for, to provide a bridge until we have our new full-time superintendent. And we hope to, we are in the middle of that process. So we will be interviewing people hopefully before the summer's over and have someone. But in the meantime, we need someone to guide us through this period. And we are very pleased with the choice we have selected, so.
I move to approve the agreement for employment of interim superintendent between the Board of Education of the Newport Mesa Unified School District and Hank Bankser, Ph.D.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Crane, seconded by Trustee Matoye. Roll call vote.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee or Soylent?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Okay, seventeen F. Aman, modify the purchasing power component that refers to Consumer Price Index regarding the Endowment Fund for the Irvine Company. We have one comment card. Is she here? It was from Wendy Lee's and she did send us all an email. So I think she said she probably couldn't be here, but we do have her information.
Dinner with her family.
Okay, so, Mr. Trader, would you like to help us out with this?
So just to provide a little bit of context and, and history, we, the district received an endowment of six million dollars from the Irvine Company. And part of that endowment is an agreement. The board some time ago wanted to protect the purchasing power of the endowment and therefore put in a clause to keep the endowment above the Consumer Price Index. And unfortunately, for over a decade, the earnings on the, of the interest of this endowment have not exceeded the Consumer Price Index. And as a result, we have not been able to use that money. So what we have before you are some options to look at that. And the last time that we met, we discussed options of using some of that money. And the board asked for a out-year look, an estimate of how things might go. And so before you, you can see a ten-year outlook that shows one option, option one, which takes essentially seven percent of all accumulated earnings to use that. And you can see there in option one, you start out at being able to use four hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars. However, when you get to the year twenty forty, after taking into account inflation, the, essentially the purchasing power, you would only be utilizing about a hundred and four thousand dollars. In option two, where you only take fifty percent of the seven percent of all accumulated earnings, you start out at two hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And by twenty forty, in terms of real purchasing power, you are at fifty-two thousand, fifty-seven dollars. We are all ears. And what you'd like to do with this.
Trustee Wagen?
So I think one thing we need to, to think of as a board is how long do we want the endowment to last? And what do we believe? And I have a question for you, actually, Mr. Trader. This earnings, is that a projection where it's, you know, a hundred and twenty-five basis points for the next? You know, so that's what you're, we're getting from the charter?
That's a, that's an estimation, yes.
Okay, but this year it's obviously seventy-seven or?
Correct.
Okay, so, I mean, when I was looking at this, you know, this year, obviously, we have a windfall of money. And same with possibly into next year. But I mean, as if we do, I was looking at option one, which gives us more purchasing power throughout the years. And it still keeps our endowment balance pretty steady to twenty fourteen. I mean, if we're looking at this, I was looking at option two originally, I think, when you first presented this to us. And, you know, it just doesn't give us much of what we can spend throughout the years. So if we are into, my thought is, is if we are really want to, want to spend and use this for something, option one gives us that, that option to have bigger purchasing power throughout the years. Knowing that at some point, you know, I don't know what the projection of the endowment balance will go down to six million eventually, right? But it's not even on this chart.
Correct, yes.
Any other comments?
So. I, I agree that I prefer to use option two. What I was confused by is this, because we have four options. So did we refresh my memory? Did we take out the other, did we take out two options as not a feasible method?
Right, so on, on the board agenda item, option one assumes that we make no changes at all.
Right.
Which essentially means in this, in, in this interest rate environment, we would simply not use the endowment until the interest rate environment changes. And then option two, of course, would be to, or I'm sorry, that's options, I'm sorry, I should have aligned this. You're making a really good point. Option two really aligns to option one in your, in your chart. And option three aligns to option two. And then there's option four, which says, you know what, we, we will spend an amount of seven percent of all accumulated earnings every year until we get to six million.
Thank you, because I was like, I swear that I thought option two on here was the right option for us. And now I'm thinking it's option one, so I'm super confused. So I still, so I still think option one, which on here is option two, is my preferred method.
So you agree that it was option one? You agree with the option?
Option one on the chart is option two on the list.
Right.
Note to self.
I apologize for that confusion.
And that makes sense that you wouldn't include it on here, because why would you include what we already know? If we don't spend it, it's going to, okay, that, okay. So, yeah, so initially I was thinking option two on our list was my preferred option, which bears out in your spreadsheet. So thank you. Okay, I did have just another question. The other part that is confusing is recommends the Board of Education direct staff to pursue an endowment policy that aligns to one of the following options. So where is the, are we voting on option two or where's the policy language? Because that part could actually be a big difference in terms of whether or not the calculation is our choice, but the policy language determines so much of what we're able to do.
I, I just came up also to, to maybe help with one part of this, which is, as we've all talked about this a number of times, it's, it's kind of that challenge of which thing do you address first? Do you address what is our goal? What do we want to do with this? Which was understandable that as we had talked about that in the past, part of the question was, well, that depends. How much money are we going to have? For how long? That'll help me decide what I might want to do. So that's kind of where we're at with this, at this point, was to, to get to that place, to be able to give you a sense of what kinds of scenarios of money. So that you could then take a look at those and say, well, the things that I would like to do tend to use money pretty close to this scenario. So, Mr. Trader, Mr. Holcomb, could we look at this type of thing that we would like to do? That I think probably lines up with these? And then what would, what would be necessary there? You know, and some of that is, in order to make some of that money happen, would require changes in your investment policy, in your board policy, in order to make that money flow to do the things you want to do. So I'm, I'm sorry, I was just kind of getting to that, that thing of figuring out, you know, I need this much money to do these things. I want to do these things. I need this much money. So we're really here, having given you sort of this approach, which is here's what the money will, the money that's likely to be able to be generated. So that you can start to think, okay, this is what we'd like to do. Does that help a little bit?
It does. I think we also have to consider the fact that for this year, we have a lot of money to use from other sources that has to be used in a timely fashion. It's not money that we can hold off as we move on. So I think that's just a little thing that needs to be taken into consideration, even if people have ideas of what they'd like to spend it on.
Absolutely.
Oh.
So what do you want us to, what kind of action do you want us to take here? Trying to figure out, do, do you want us to choose an option? Or do you want us to just think about what we wanted to do with money and then pick not?
As Mr. Trader mentioned earlier, unfortunately, because of the restrictions on our investment earnings being in the county treasury and what the county treasurer will allow us to earn, we've been upside down with regard to the CPI. So for years, as Mr. Trader mentioned, the district hasn't done anything with this. And, and so, you know, we're, we're earning more money, the account balance goes up, but the purchasing power actually has been going down all that period of time. Understandably, wherever we want to look to the folks who started saying, we haven't talked about this in a long time. Maybe we should talk about this because our purchasing power is going down. We're not spending it. It's there. Should we have a discussion instead of just going more years? So we, we don't need you to make a decision now. So back to the questions that were made, or statements that were made by a couple of board members, we're, we're getting COVID money right now and those things. Does that factor into your decision as to whether or not now or later? But this discussion has been happening for a couple of years of the fact that we're not, we haven't had a discussion in a long time and the board wants to have that discussion. So we're simply trying to facilitate that discussion for you. Help you to decide, do we want to do something now? Do we want to wait? And have your data to have that, that proper.
And I, and I know our money is with the Department of Education and, and I know the answer to this. But obviously, they have not done a great job of investing this money. And we've been told we cannot take it away from them to put it with someone else to manage, correct?
Is that true?
Yep.
Yes, yes, that is.
And there's no way that we can lobby them or like say?
Well, we, we are obligated, the county treasurer has, we, we are obligated to, to invest that money through the county treasurer. Talking with the county treasurer about how it's invested, what, what the rules are. The county treasurer has, has latitudes that, that aren't ours to choose. So we, we have to have those conversations with them and work within their guidelines.
Well. Yeah, so then my question just becomes, if we, this begins a, a study session to kind of to figure this out, because it's a pretty big decision. It kind of reminds me of what I'm going through with my house that flooded. Our house flooded, insurance is covering that portion. We had some savings to cover an additional remodel at some point. We're like, great, while we're out of the house, let's just do all things at once. It makes the most sense. Except for, we didn't plan it, lumber is super high, the contractor is not available. You know, we're squeezing into a schedule, so we're trying to make something fit, which should have been a longer-term plan, which initially seemed like a great idea. And then the contractor came back with a number that was just a very high number for all the reasons I just did. And I said, no, actually, it makes more sense to put things back a certain way, plan it and then plan ahead. So I'm just hoping that maybe this is something that's kind of the same thing, where we're like, okay, this, we love seeing this, this is really great, let's have a greater discussion and build a plan around it. And then adopt a policy kind of in conjunction to, to spend that.
Right, and we don't have to do anything tonight.
Okay.
We can.
That's right, that makes a lot of sense. Pardon me one quick second, because I do feel like I didn't do a very good job, President Yelcy, of answering your question, which was, we, Mr. Trader, spoke with the county treasurer some time ago to talk about the nature of this money, that it's intended to be an endowment, that it's a long term, and talked about the relationship between when the use is and, and, and how we believed the best investment strategy was. And there was not the flexibility that we were advocating for at the time. We could ask the county treasurer, you know, talk to them again, see whether or not they are more open to the idea. It's been a while, I think, Mr. Trader, since we've had that conversation. We could do that again. But they are the, we are required to invest our money through them.
Okay. Trustee Crane?
For one, I think this is a positive step, because I know that this endowment has been a subject of the public's opinions and comments. And so I'm glad that we are, one, having a discussion about this endowment. And two, I very much agree with Trustee Barto in the sense that we should start focusing on discussing this and what to do with it. Because three, I don't like that it's losing, you know, this, this, we're losing money, really. Our purchasing power is decreasing, so why are we doing that to ourselves? So definitely a study session to discuss a long-term policy, change possibly what we've already established a few years back and move forward. And I, I do like the fact that, Mr. Holcomb, you can maybe reach out to the county treasurer and see if we have other options.
Is that a consensus of the board that you would like? It has been some time since we spoke with them.
Yeah, I just wanted to also follow up. Would it help then for us to have? One of the things that I've noticed is we have a variety. We don't really have a policy that addresses our endowment use. We have the one that's often quoted and was the, is the only one that's more recently updated. That's three, one, one, zero. That's the Transfer of Funds, which is actually part of the thing that concerns me, because that was when I started realizing the special endowment is also joined in Fund Seventeen with our Risk Management and General Stabilization. So money was going in and out with that. But our investing, we have a policy three, four, three, zero that stipulates that our district is supposed to have an investment advisory committee. I don't know when the last time we had an investment advisory committee. So I think that could be something. And then we, investing is actually vaguely mentioned in three of our other policies. And then we, investing is actually vaguely mentioned in three of our other policies, but it doesn't really, it's kind of says the same language, doesn't specify. And then we also have policy three, two, nine, zero, which is gifts, grants and bequests. And other districts who have updated their policies more recently than ours. For us, the gifts was last updated in 2009. Other districts have their endowment information in that item. And then the investing, our board policy has not been updated since 1998. So I think because we have a variety of policies and they, none of them really line up with this. And policy, from what I went with CSBA, should inform our action. So it sounds like we need to really create and assess what our board wants to create with the policy. So then that will inform the next steps.
So would, would the policy committee like to look at this?
Oh, boy.
Yes.
We've got all sorts of cool policies to look at.
Okay, so is everyone okay with sending it to the policy committee? Having a study session and we can look and see when we can do that, when everybody's available? And then making a.
The policy?
Yes.
If we're creating a whole new policy, I'd like to have some advice, advisors in the meeting. I mean, Mr. Trader, I'd like to have you be there and Mr. Holcomb because.
I think that's a reasonable.
We're writing the policy as opposed to editing something that's already there. I'm a great editor. Creating, I don't want to get us into any legal trouble. And so I would like that. But if, if it's, what's the driving force, chicken or the egg? If we, if we kind of get a feel as a board that we're leaning towards the option one plan to spend, then at least we have some guidelines on how we can address it in the policy. So I agree that, you know, we have too many things up in the air to, to make it an easy flow. And so can we do a straw poll of whether we're okay?
We're okay of leaning toward.
Toward the option one plan of spending so that we keep our endowment, but get some money out to the kids.
Is everyone comfortable with going that direction?
I'm, I'm not as comfortable with that, actually. I really feel like I would like for us to look at the policies first. There's other, there's a couple of other districts that I've looked at that have low language. Because there, there are a couple of things that I see that are kind of a little, I think it was good analysis, but I think like there's some that say seven percent and often five percent is a norm. So I think that's a high, like our number one thing is to create a policy in my.
Okay, so can we have the policy committee sit down with Mr. Trader?
Yes.
And try to determine what would be best to bring back to us?
That sounds.
That's a good suggestion.
Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you.
We've gotten further on that one tonight. That's wonderful.
Okay, we have added one more item, sixteen, eight, thirteen, and I will turn this over to trustee Orsolo.
Yes, thank you. And that one was just more of a newbie question because it looks like this is the third, third sort of contract augmentation, I guess you can call it, with this group, Pinar. And it's for, you know, a pretty large amount. And the description of it was that it's ongoing support in projects that are yet to be designed. So it, I'm just curious because from the outside, it looks like it may be sort of sole sourcing just all this additional work to a group that we just happen to have. So is it just that we've had this on-call contract with them for a long time? And we're just going to keep adding to it because that's a large amount of money. So I'm curious, what is our board policy around the size of a bid that must go out to like public bid versus being added on to an existing contract?
They haven't been here a long time.
Oh, okay.
That's, they're, they're more recent.
Okay.
We got rid of the company.
Mr. Holcomb, can you address this?
Yes, if I can. To Ms. Matoya's comment, many years, many, many years ago, the district really didn't have a facility, an in-house facilities team and contracted out to manage everything that the district did with regard to facilities. And there was a company who was here for, for many, 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 many years. The, the district, since I've gotten here, we've, we've put out an RFQ. We've, we've tried a couple of different firms and we've had some good success with this firm recently. We still have, you know, in comparison with, with many districts for the numbers of projects that we have, we have a very, very small facilities team. And, and you know, whether you would say that it's directly thought through policy or it's just the fact that we started out with consultants doing a lot of the work based on the ebbs and flows of how many projects we have. That's where the district has been. And we have a lot of projects. And your item, you see, for example, there's just a lot of little projects and all of these things need to be overseen. And having people on site to make sure the contractors are doing what they're supposed to be doing, helping to coordinate with school sites for the safety of our staff and our students. All of that is what this is for. So we have a lot of projects going on and the purpose of this is to have a consultant who can be available to be on site to provide that level of oversight in support of our existing facilities team.
Is this a not to exceed number or is this a hard number?
This is, this is, they bill on an hourly basis for the actual hours worked. So this is really an estimate based on the types of projects and the level of oversight that is anticipated based on each of these types of projects. The ones that are listed in your board item.
Is there, it looks like, one of the questions I have, it sounds like we use, we used to use consultants oftentimes for this. But based on the numbers that are in here, there are, there's a construction manager ask of over four thousand hours, which is over, it's nearly $600,000. So perhaps instead of using an outside firm, it is time to hire someone to do that job in-house. Would be my opinion because if we have allocated money for that, I mean, that, that's a full-time person's job. And then I, I'm also wondering, because I saw on our last agenda that our, we had a facilities analyst, Mark, who is doing a lot of the facilities work. And is he no longer with us?
He, fortunately for him, recently was selected to be a director of facilities at another neighboring district. So the position has already been flown and we're very enthusiastic about it being quickly filled. But we are short a person for a short period of time here, we believe.
Okay, so we're looking for that position and then maybe perhaps we might need a construction manager. Like, would that be a position that we could possibly hire to build out the facilities team that we have? Since we have ongoing facilities, we have a lot of our facilities are getting older.
This, this, this was anticipated prior to us being aware that he was being selected for that position. So this had already been estimated before that. But to, to your, your question, your point, it's, it's discussed. I've worked with many, many districts over the years. It's discussed in every district, the question of whether or not to meet the ebbs and flows of project demands with consultant staff or permanent staff. Because it does ebb and flow. So I, you know, yours is, is one of the points of view and there are other points of view as to whether or not we, we should do that. We're open to that conversation as we go forward.
Yeah, I, I just want to add that, you know, the, the point about is there, is it better to have full-time staff or is it better to use a consultant? And I just want you to know that we, we do have those discussions all the time in several areas. But one of the things about having a consultant like this is, as you can see, so many different projects, you might need just more bodies. And sometimes this gives the district the flexibility that if you have one full-time person here, that means it's one body, but you might have two or three projects that need bodies there. And so, but, but you're, I just want to acknowledge your point that that is something we look at. Is there a, a point we bring in staff? And right now, you know, we, as you know, hiring is, is a challenge. And we certainly need to keep these projects with the proper oversight, but we, we do look at that.
I, just a little history. When we started Measure A, we had, we hired a consultant and we found that that consultant couldn't get to all the spots at all the time. And it was too hard for one person to oversight. And he was a phenomenal worker and did a great job, but it was too much. And that's after, after the, the waning parts of that because McCarthy was at that time our contract manager or construction managers, which is a different thing. And they, and we developed a relationship and they hired and we had them for years and years and years. And then more recently, the board said, yes, they're not the same fit that they were before. Let's move on. So as long as it's the situation where they bill us on hours, they, we may use more, we may use less. We had a lot of work last year dealing over the Ensign and CDM and the pool. I mean, that was a lot of different money. And those were big ginormous projects, so.
And we still have a lot of work.
Yeah, and, and now we have a bunch of little projects, but anticipating the big projects that we have coming up. It's. It, it's. Right now, I believe that having a confirm that can have more people go out at more times, it provides the oversight that we really need and not just hoping the one guy gets over there on the one time that has to happen. So I support having.
And once again, we don't pay them and we don't use them.
Yes.
That's correct.
That's the whole, that's what I meant. If we don't, yeah, we don't pay them if we don't use it.
So I, I guess my, my concern is that because I absolutely think that outsourcing it is fine. I'm not concerned about inside versus outside. I'm concerned about outside versus another outside. So for instance, this really seems like it's, you know, an on-call contract that, I mean, it was nearly a million dollars, right? So it seems like it's on-call, we're sort of going with them. It's been a couple of years. Sort of what, at what point will it go to public bid? Because I worry that like we'll just get comfortable with that. And I know it's the early stages, but I do a lot of public contracting myself and I know that most public agencies, they, they want to like sort of cap you at like three years or five years. Okay, we're going to rebid it now. You can't automatically get it. So trying to figure out what our policy limitation is, is it three years? Is it five years?
So in, in fact, we, we have recently gone out with a construction management RFQ and we're in the process for that. That is primarily with regard to the theater project, which, you know, this is a lot of little projects, little fees, all adding up to a large number. Large projects have a large number just for the large project. And so this firm is not being considered as, as a part of this for big projects like that project. That is, has been competed and staff is still working through that process and will be bringing that recommendation to you in the future.
Good to know.
Okay.
Are we considering then like possibly hiring a construction manager though? If we're paying someone for, I mean, I, it just seems like that could be a conversation that I would love for us to have, Mark, because it, to spend this much money for possibly under a year's worth of work is just a lot, a lot, that's not necessarily very fiscally conservative in my mind.
Okay, so I, I want to go back to the item itself, which is approve amendment number three with Pinner Construction for Construction Management Services at various school sites.
I move. Matoya?
I'll second.
Is there a second on this?
I do, but I am losing my voice.
You do what?
I said, I seconded, but I'm losing my voice.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. At least we have that on the table. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay, roll call vote?
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Matoya?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
No.
Trustee Crane? Trustee Orsolo?
No.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Okay, roll call vote is five, two. We'll move to informal reports. Superintendent Lee Sung.
No, no further report. Thank you.
Dr. Juckum.
Good evening. Just a couple of things to bring to your attention tonight. One is that during the conversation with our parents from D-LAC, it reminded me of some reclassification information that we have for our students with special education with IEP. So during this year, forty-two students with IEPs were reclassified as fluent English proficient students. And thirty of those were elementary students and twelve were secondary students. And this was using, there's an alternate reclassification pathway. And Laura, who, who unfortunately walked out, I wanted to say she works really hard with our, with Andrea Vanderwalen of our TOSES and Celeste Cleary, one of our other TOSES, to, to move this process forward for those students. So we're really proud of the work that they've all done on that. And then the, the second thing is to piggyback on Superintendent Lee Sung's summer school update and just provide a little bit more information about our extended school year, which started on Monday. So we have preschool through second grade classes at Woodland Elementary and we have eighteen classes there. And there's also gen ed classes on that site. And with special ed, we have over two hundred students in that summer program. Kaiser, we have third through sixth grade. We have seven classes. And, and again, there's also a general ed component on that site. And then we do have another teacher at that site who's providing some distance learning since there are some students who, due to their special needs, are not able to attend in person. And she's also located at, at Kaiser. And they have about seventy students enrolled. T-Winkle is, is hosting our seven through twelve program with five classes and forty-five students. And then STEP, which is our adult transition program, has two classes with twenty-six students. And then in addition to that, special ed is also providing some additional support for the general education summer school program. We have two SAI, which is our specialized academic instruction slash formerly known as RSP, teachers working with gen ed teachers across nine campuses. And we have four hundred and three students attending the gen ed summer enrichment program that either have IEPs or 504s. So we definitely want to make sure we have the support for them. And then we also hired an additional special education instructional assistance support to support each of the nine campuses where the, where they have students with IEPs in the general education program as well. So it's really been a good mesh of general education and special education support. So I, I'm excited to go out. I told them I give them a week to kind of get the program in order. And then I will be going out at the end of next week to, to look at the program. So they're off to a great start. And I, I would like to acknowledge the, the Herculean efforts of Carrie Adams. She's one of our special education coordinators. And she worked very hard to kind of help coordinate and put this summer program together, you know, in conjunction with Lori Hogard. And then there's just all of the, you know, the, it's the adage of it takes a village. The, the work of Shelley Humphries in transportation to get all of, all of these different kids where they need to go and nutrition services and all of that. So it, it really takes the, 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 the business of the entire district to get this kind of a program running. So we're really appreciative of that. Thank you.
This is fantastic. I love hearing this. Are we, are trustees allowed to go when you go out there and visit? Can we tag along?
You may either tag along or I can take you with Candy or myself. Yes, absolutely. I will, I'll work through the superintendent's office and let you know when planning to go out, but would love to show anybody the different programs we have, so.
Would love that. And I have another question. The reclassification numbers that you used, forty-two students, is, is there a COVID element to the number where it's higher or lower than usual?
I don't have that information off the top of my head, so I would have to find that out.
That's okay. All right, thank you.
To follow up on that, I would love to know what the alter, I would love to learn more, not necessarily today, but what the alternative reclassification process is like, that I'm very interested in that.
Sure, I'll work with Vanessa and we can make sure that we get that information and how, how the special education office and, and Laura and Vanessa work closely to make that all happen.
Thank you.
It's great.
Is there anybody else out there who has a report? Dr. Baumeister?
I thought I'd come up right afterwards because I have a report on our secondary extended learning academy over the summer. I wanted to give you. I thought I'd come up right afterwards because I have a report on our secondary extended learning academy over the summer. I wanted to give you just an idea of what the class offerings are at our conference of high schools. So the program started yesterday, other than Estancia Math, which started last week because some of their teachers couldn't do on the backend, so they moved theirs up a week. But everybody else started yesterday and go through July sixteenth. At Estancia, they're offering algebra and geometry. They're offering Complet ten, world history, credit recovery and PE. At Cornell Amar, they are offering a math bridge program for their incoming ninth graders. Algebra one, geometry, Complet one, Complet three, three sections of credit recovery. At Costa Mesa High School, algebra, geometry, English Language Arts, ELD and PE. And at Newport Harbor High School, algebra, geometry, Complet one, two, three and four, world history, US history and credit recovery. And I can tell you, since I've been in the district, this is the most extensive summer program we've had since the nineties.
Yes.
We also have a district credit recovery program at Estancia. It's run out of Estancia with math, English Language Arts and Social Science. And our middle school will run a summer bridge program, August second through the eleventh in the English Language Arts and Math, all four of our middle schools, Cornell Amar, Costa Mesa, Ensign and Tinko will be running that bridge program, August second to the eleventh, three hours a day. So those are our second, secondary offerings. I also wanted to just quickly tell you about the SMART Camp, which started yesterday, to which we run in conjunction with the city. It's actually the city's program. They use our facilities and our coaches and teachers and our kids. The art program is full. They have a hundred kids in the art program. The music program has forty-three students in it and the sports program has about ninety kids in it right now. So it's a off and running and going well.
Thank you. I was wondering about that.
Are the, are the high school programs run by the high school administrator, our current high school administrators? I know the elementary schools have different administrators.
Yeah, at, at the secondary schools, the high schools, you know, they have your, some sports going, there's always stuff going on. So there's always an administrator on. So they pretty much rotate it. One will take one week, one will take the next. And since they have multiple administrators, they rotate that.
Okay, great. Thank you. No report by Mr. Trader? No report. Okay, any board member reports?
It's only been a week.
The only thing I wanted to comment on, five of us I know, and the superintendent went to the mentor for lunch program at the, at Newport Harbor High School, which was amazing. And Debbie Brustick acknowledged that it was the first time she remembers in twenty-four years, the superintendent attending that. So thank you. She really appreciated that. I did have the opportunity to meet with her after this week. And because so many people have reached out from some other schools who would like to do similar programs. And so I've talked to Mr. Lee Sung and hopefully we can maybe try to work something out where she could help some other schools if they wanted to get involved. But also, I don't know if any of you had a chance to look at yet the COVID chronicles that we each got copies of. But I, I mean, they're books.
You're right.
But I actually just read like the first twenty pages of one of them. I've had time and they're amazing. It's, these are chronicles that they've, the foundation at Newport Harbor put together. And they are essays that kids have, the students have written about different experiences during COVID. And it's really, I mean, they, they could sell this book. It's, they're pretty amazing. So when you get an opportunity this summer, it's great summer reading. So use them. Are there any, I don't think we have any board committee reports.
Just that the Coastline ROP is working on their WASC accreditation, which got pushed a year. And that's taking, you know, that's the, probably the most of their efforts over the summer.
Okay, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Anderson.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Moved by trustee Anderson.
Second.
Secondly, by trustee Matoya. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And thank you all. We are adjourning at nine thirteen and hopefully we will be in person for the next meeting.